I ask that out of respect to everyone, please silence all electronic devices. At this time, I would like to call the meeting to order. The time is 5:30 PM. I would like to recognize the superintendent for a series of awards and presentations.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We do have a number of presentations and Dr. Kara Shafty will kick us off.
Good evening, Honorable Chair, Board Members, Dr. Moore, and esteemed guests. It's a pleasure to welcome you to tonight's awards and presentations. We'll begin this evening with a musical performance. Joining us first are Liberty Magnet Schools Golden Eagle Singers under the direction of Ms. Sherri St. Petery. Please give them a warm welcome as they come to the front.
All right, here they come.
They're still coming.
If you want to go down and see it, I mean.
Might sound better. We're not looking at the back of their heads.
Let us sing together, let us sing together, one and all together in song. Let us sing together, one and all together in song. Let us sing again and again, let us sing again and again. Let us sing again and again, one and all together in song. Let us sing together, let us sing together, one and all together in song. Let us sing together, let us sing together, one and all together in song. Let us sing together, one and all together in song. Let us sing again and again, let us sing again and again. Let us sing again and again, one and all together in song. (Applause) We're so happy to be living in the USA. We're a whole people in the heart of America. We get up each morning and create our new day. We know that we're free to, we live in our way. We're free to be saying what we want to say. We're happy for living in our USA. We're living in the heart and the heart of America. We're living in the heart and the heart of America. We're living in the heart and the heart of America. We're living in the heart and the heart of America. We live in a land where our dreams can come true. A country with choices for me and for you. A vision, our freedom will always shine through. We're happy for living in red, white, and blue. We're living in the heart and the heart of America. We're living in the heart and the heart of America. We're living in the heart and the heart of America. We're living in the heart and the heart of America. Listen to the heartbeat. Listen to the heartbeat. Listen to the heartbeat. Listen to the heartbeat. We're living in the heart and the heart of America. We're living in the heart and the heart of America. We're living in the heart and the heart of America. Oh yeah, we're living in the heart and the heart of America. America, America. America, America. America, America. The hearts!
So, thank you guys for having us here. These students are in the club, the chorus club, at the 39th, third quarter fifth graders, and they practice once a week for 20 minutes before school. So, 20 minutes before school, once a week. They're amazing, they come in, they're amazing. Thank you guys. Please rise and welcome Willie and Ben for appearing on our national anthem. And, um, we would like to acknowledge our accomplice, Ms. Reiser.
Ms. St. Petery, will you keep them and we'll have a photo with our school board?
Wait, they just asked us to stay here personally.
That was awesome, guys. You're really good singers. That was great.
Mr. Taylor.
Wait, 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 wait.
One, two, and three. Stay calm. We're ready!
Hold that smile and let your families take photos. Thank you very much. Please give them another round of applause.
Good job, guys.
Thank you. Congratulations.
I know. The Chick-fil-A! I know, right? What a coinkydink. Yeah, I know. What should we sing about, guys? Oh, I got an idea.
Next, we celebrate the creativity of civic engagement of our students. Last month, in honor of American Founders Month and Celebrate Freedom Week, which was September 22nd through 26th, we invited schools from across the district to participate in a video challenge. Students and teachers submitted their projects to highlight the importance of our nation's founding principles. Tonight, we are proud to not only share these submissions, but also to recognize the students and teachers behind them. We'll view the videos in the following order. Beachland Elementary, pre-K students from Mrs. Fletcher and Mrs. Trudy's classes, Wabasso School, and Vero Beach High School students from Mr. Poole and Mr. Wood's classes. Please view our monitors.
We hold these truths to be self-evident.
All men are created equal.
But they are endowed by their Creator.
And the sense of equal or of rights.
The mindy are.
Life, liberty, and happiness.
That is security's rights.
Governments are instituted among men.
Deriving their just powers.
Freedom can mean something different to everyone. For some, freedom's about having a voice. For others, it's about being able to be yourself. We asked our students here at Wabasso, what does freedom mean to you? This is what they had to say.
Freedom is buying stuff that you really want.
Not doing chores.
Freedom is bringing to your toys to come to school.
The US Constitution is the foundation of our country's freedom. It protects our rights like freedom of speech, religion, and the right to vote. By setting rules for how our government works and making sure no one has too much power, the Constitution helps keep us free and fair. It reminds us that in America, the people have a voice, and that freedom is something we all share and protect together.
We hold these truths to be self-evident.
All men are created equal.
They are endowed by their Creator.
With certain unalienable rights.
Among these are.
And the sense of happiness.
That to secure these rights. Governments are instituted among men.
Deriving their just powers from the consent of government.
(Music)
Oh my gosh. Why climb the highest mountain? Why, 35 years ago? Fly the Atlantic? Why does Rice play Texas? We choose to go to the moon. We choose to go to the moon. We choose to go to the moon in this decade and do the other things, not because they are easy, but because they are hard. Because that gold will serve to organize and measure the best of our energies and skills. Because that challenge is one that we're willing to accept, one we are unwilling to postpone, and one we intend to win.
Okay, here we go, big one. Here we go.
It is a dream deeply rooted in the American dream. I have a dream, that one day, this nation will rise up.
As we mourn the wars of thousands of our citizens.
I can hear you!
Tonight, I report to the American people and to the world. The United States has conducted operations and killed Osama Bin Laden, the leader of al-Qaeda. A terrorist who is responsible for the murder of thousands.
The United States of America stands as the greatest nation in human history. A beacon of freedom and hope to all the world. Founded on the bold promise that every person is endowed with unalienable rights. It has created a republic unlike any before it. One that empowers the people, not the rulers. From the sparks of a revolution to that triumphs of innovation, America has led humanity forward, pioneering discoveries, advancing liberty, and shaping the destiny of nations.
We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights. That among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. That to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of government.
Yeah!
In honor of Americans Founders Month, we recognize Freedom Week, which is September 22nd through the 26th.
And there is no better example of freedom in America than the Declaration of Independence.
The 13 American colonies created the Declaration of Independence to announce that they were splitting from Great Britain and that they had the right to govern themselves.
Paragraph 2 of the Declaration of Independence lays out the fundamental principles of equality. For example, we hold these truths to be self-evident that all men are created equal.
That they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights.
That among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness.
That to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men.
Deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed.
Freedom for me is when someone doesn't have to act or do a certain thing in a certain way people want them to do, they just have to be themselves.
Freedom is the way to express our thoughts, rights, and liberty, and as a whole nation, we the people.
When you have freedom, it means you want to do something right by helping other people, helping other people in doing charity work, and you want to help others save lives and do something good for the world.
To me, freedom is the right to be able to do things as you please without having to feel afraid of what other people might think about you.
Freedom is the power to act, speak, or think however you want.
What freedom means to me is the ability to work for whatever you would like, maybe share opinions without hurting others.
Freedom is the unalienable right that everyone is born with that represents in America, the capability of doing whatever one may wish, as long as you follow the laws and don't disrupt others.
To me, freedom is the ability to do what you want, as long as it doesn't encroach on another person's freedoms.
Freedom means having the free will to make your own choices, have your own beliefs, being able to control your own actions, and having the right to act, speak, and think freely.
Freedom to me is being able to speak my mind and do what I want without being judged.
Freedom is the ability to think whatever you want, you can be whatever you want, and you have free reign to do whatever you want, as long as it doesn't cause harm to another individual and to this legal. Freedom is being able to walk outside and not be prosecuted for simply existing. You can express yourself however you want to. That's what freedom means to me.
What an incredible display of creativity, pride, and understanding of our history. We would now like to invite all participating students to the front so we could recognize you together. Students, teachers, and administrators who help support these videos, please join us at the front.
Put the Beachland Stars in the front.
Smile for your families. Fantastic. Let's give them another round of applause. Finally, we have a very special recognition this evening. At this time, I will turn the program over to our chair to present this honor.
So, let me, let me. So, our chair is actually home after her second knee surgery, so we would like to turn it over to her to set this item up and, um, Doc Chair, Doc Jones will, Doc Chair, Doc Jones will present it from there.
Thank you for this opportunity. I hope you can hear me okay. I think when an employee goes above and beyond to get extra training, we, it should be recognized. And so, the FSBA, which is the Florida School Board Association, has offered training for executive assistants across the state, and our own, Mrs. Morey, underwent the first, I believe, cadre of people that went through the training and graduated, got her certification, and that empowered her to be able to learn more about her job and to help us as a board. And so, for that, I'd just like to recognize her extra efforts. Thank you so much, Ms. Morey.
Thank you. All right, good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to recognize Dorian Morey, Executive Assistant to the School Board for an outstanding professional achievement. Dorian has earned the Florida School Boards Association Certified Support Professional Designation, or CSP. This distinguished honor recognizes school board support personnel who demonstrate exceptional dedication to professional growth and service to public education. By completing the program's rigorous training, Dorian has shown an extraordinary commitment to excellence in her role. She will also be teaching training efforts for other support professionals across the state, sharing the knowledge, and setting a high standard for others to follow. As FSBA member services specialist Carolyn Sanders has said, "Support professionals are often the unsung heroes of our school systems." The CSP designation reflects in individuals' proactive investment in their work and their commitment to their school board and district. To commemorate this achievement, a plaque will be presented to Dorian, Ms. Morey. We invite you to join the board at the front in a photo opportunity, and on behalf of the school board and the entire Indian River School District, we congratulate you, Dorian, and thank you for your professionalism, dedication, and the vital role you play in supporting student success. Thank you. Good evening, board members, Dr. Moore, Dr. Jacobs, and esteemed colleagues. I stand before you today and with deep gratitude and humility upon receiving this certification and recognition. It is not only a personal milestone, but a reflection of the incredible support system I've been fortunate to have throughout my career. My journey and education began in Lone Branch School District in New Jersey, where I spent eight years working in the superintendent's office. I later continued in private education with Saint Edward's School in Vero Beach, where I served for 19 years. During that time, I had the privilege of working under amazing and encouraging mentors, Mr. George Katrinbone, Mr. Bruce Walter, and Mr. Michael Mursky, who not only saw me as their executive assistant, but as family, and for that, I will always be grateful. Their belief in me and their guidance is what ultimately led me here to the school district of Indian River County. First, I want to sincerely thank Dr. Moore, our superintendent, and Dr. Jacobs, our chief of staff, for choosing me to be part of your team. Your confidence in my work and your continued support in my professional growth have meant more than words can express. You've created an environment where learning, collaboration, and excellence are not just encouraged, are not just encouraged, but they are expected. I'm proud to contribute to that vision. To our school board members, thank you for your unwavering support and guidance. I deeply appreciate the time. I deeply appreciate the time you've taken to answer all my questions and help me better understand the intersection of education and government. Your insights have been instrumental in my growth and have inspired me to continue learning and contribute, and contributing meaningfully. I would reminisce if I didn't mention the wonderful team of colleagues across all departments who made me feel like home from day one. Now, two years and three months later, I can still call on any of them without any hesitation and know that they will provide assistance. That kind of camaraderie and support is rare, and I truly cherish it. Saving the best for last, I want to recognize my family who is here with me tonight, especially my husband Louie, my daughters Stephanie and Luisa. Luisa is watching on livestream from Georgia. They have been my few and greatest cheerleaders in pursuing my educational and professional goals. I also want to acknowledge my sisters, Betsy and Millie, who could not be here tonight due to work responsibilities, and the most important person in my life, mi mommy, my mom, Maria, who just turned ninety-three on October twenty-third. And she has been at every graduation, presentation, recognition, awards in my entire life, and this is another one of them. I am truly blessed and privileged. And in closing, this recognition is not mine alone. It belongs to everyone who has mentored me, believed in me, and helped me grow. I look forward to continuing to serve with integrity, enthusiasm, and a deep, a deep respect for the work that we all do together in the Indian River School District. Thank you for the honor.
Dr. Moore, Dr. Moore.
Louie, you can hold the flag.
Yes. One, two, and three. I'm gonna take one more. One, two, and perfect. Got it?
Congratulations. So cute.
Congratulations.
Thank you for coming.
All right, Madam Chair, that does conclude the presentations. I do see our sheriff in the back. When you see the sheriff, you always get nervous, like, why is he here? But I just want to thank him for all of his support, hard work, and partnership. Thank you so much for everything.
Thank you. All right, um, we're going to start. Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, thank you. I just want to say officially, I know I've said it to all you guys in private. I know we're going through a very public budget battle. Obviously, protection and safety.
Mike, Mike, Mike.
Just turn it up.
Maybe, is that it? There we go. Hey, I know that we've been going through a very public budget battle, and I just want to say, I've said it to all you guys in private, but I want to say in front of everybody else, protection and safety of our kids are the utmost importance. It's our number-one priority, and at no time will there ever be any compromise on the safety of our, our school kids, our schools, our teachers, and everybody. So thank you, guys, for all that, what you do. Thank you for allowing me to come speak for a minute. Have a great night tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff Flowers. Thank you. All right, we're just gonna take a minute, and then we're gonna start with our invocation in one minute. Our invocation in one minute. Thank you. Remember, please give that to our wonderful executive assistant, Dorian Morey. Please stand for the colors and the presentation by Sebastian River High School, led by Commander Peter Bissonnet.
Carry colors. Ready, cut, forward, march, left, 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 right, left, left. March, come, march, left, left. Color guard, halt, counter march, march, left, 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 right, left, 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 right, left. Color guard, halt, present, colors.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carry colors. Ready, cut, order, colors. Ready, cut, halt, colors, march. Halt, colors. Hand salute. Ready, two. Halt, colors, march. Forward, march, left, 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 right, left, 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 right, left. Color guard, halt.
Thank you very much, Sebastian River High School, ROTC, Peter Bissonnet. We appreciate you. All right, our next item on the agenda, board members, adoption of the orders of the day. Board members, are there any items, any board member wishes to move from consent to action?
Thank you, Ms. Rosario. Item number and the topic, please. Item number, Consent E, five E, resolution, approval of technical corrections to board policies.
Thank you very much. Any other item move from consent to action? Okay?
No, that's it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Any item added for discussion, board members? All right, we're good to go. Call for a motion to accept the adoption of the orders of the day as amended?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Pasca. Second?
Second.
Ms. Rosario, discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you, Ms. Baronbor. Okay, carries five to zero. Thank you very much. All right, our next item on the agenda, we have the Parental Rights and Appreciation Month proclamation. Dr. Moore, I'm turning it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will turn it over to Dr. Shafdi to have our proclamation read. Dr. Shafdi?
Thank you, Dr. Moore. This board first adopted on June tenth, twenty-twenty-four, the first-of-its-kind parental rights and appreciation proclamation. This evening, it is my honor and privilege to introduce two fantastic parents from Liberty Magnet School who will read this proclamation before the board. Ms. Anna Lee Vera and Ms. Katie Carmax, please join us at the podium.
Wouldn't be parents without kids, right?
A proclamation to affirm the commitment of the School Board of Indian River County to the fundamental rights of parental and legal guardians to direct the education of their children and designate the month of October as Parental Rights and Appreciation Month. Whereas, parents and legal guardians are in the best position to know their own child's needs and circumstances, and therefore should maintain authority over all decisions that could impact the health and well-being of their children. And whereas, the fundamental right of parents and legal guardians over the upbringing of their children have been unequivocally established in the United States. And whereas, the school board recognizes Sections 1014 dot zero one dash zero oh six, Florida statutes titled Parents' Bills of Rights, which emphatically states in that the legislator finds that in the fundamental rights of the parent's guardians to direct the upbringing, education, and care of their minor children. The legislator further finds that important information relating to a minor child should not be withheld, either inadvertently or purposefully, from his or her parent or guardian, including information relating to the minor's child's health, well-being, and education while the minor is in the custody of the school district. And further states that in the state, any of its political subdivisions, any other governmental entity or any other institution may not infringe on the fundamental rights of a parent or guardian to direct the upbringing, education, health care, and mental health of his or her minor children without demonstrating that such action is reasonable and necessary to achieve a compelling state interest and that such action is narrowly tailored and is not otherwise served by a less restrictive means. And whereas, the school board recognizes its duty under Section 1001 dot four-two-eight-C, Florida statutes to adopt procedures for notifying a student's parent and legal guardian if there is a change in the student services or monitoring related to the student's mental, emotional, or physical health or well-being and the school's ability to provide a safe and supportive learning environment for the student. In order to reinforce the fundamental right of parent's guardian to make decisions regarding the upbringing and control of their children as described in Section 1001 dot four-two-eight-C one, Florida statutes. And whereas, the school board believes that all academic success begins by embracing these fundamental parental rights in our educational institutions. And whereas, it is essential that parents and legal guardians' voices are respected and incorporated into the development of a, of an academic curricula to ensure that their children are receiving an appropriate education. And whereas, the school board believes that education must focus on academic subjects and without exception should not include personal bias, personal political opinion, or indoctrination. And whereas, the school board believes that any parent and legal guardian has the right to see and evaluate all surveys, data collection, and psychological profiling before they are administered to their students' children, and that parents' legal guardians have the right to opt out of any or all such testing, survey participation, and/or data collection. And that Sections 1014 dot zero one dash zero six and 1003 dot four-two-five, Florida statutes, establish numerous rights for parents and legal guardians in this regard. Therefore, be it resolved that the school board affirms our commitment to honor, celebrate, and appreciate parents' legal guardians as well as the fundamental right of parents' legal guardians to direct the well-being and education of their children. And all employees will uphold the traditional partnership between teachers, students, and parent legal guardians by directly communicating with and involving parents' legal guardians in the education of their children. Now be it proclaimed that the School Board of Indian River County, Florida, designates the month of October as Parental Rights and Appreciation Month.
Thank you, parents, for reading that proclamation. I was informed that Patty Sullivan, who is the president of Parental Rights of Florida, is here for the reading of that. So thank you for, for joining us. We appreciate that. Give her a round of applause. And this is something unique to, to Indian River County. I, through social media, as we share out the work that we're doing, I had a number of inquiries from other superintendents and their staffs and the other Treasure Coast districts. So I think we're starting something here. So with that, Madam Chair, I'll turn it back over to you for...
Yes, yes. I was, any board member before we vote on this proclamation? Yes, I just, I'm grateful that Patty is here. Patty Sullivan is the leader in the movement of parental rights. She, I think it started more than ten years ago. I may have it a little bit wrong. Twelve years ago, with a paragraph. It is the perfect visual, the perfect understanding of how citizens play a role in government. Where a citizen had a concern, brought the one paragraph, may have it wrong, please forgive me if I get any of this wrong, to her representative at the time, and now we have... me if I get any of this wrong, to her representative at the time, and now we have a parental rights bill. Many years of hearing no but persistence brought us to this place where we are right now, and now we have an entire state in favor of protecting parental rights and the upbringing of our children. I will say that along with Patty, of course, is our Senator Erin Groll, who was really the one who took Patty's suggestions and kind of brought us to this place. So, Dr. Moore, last year when I brought this proclamation forward, it was, we were the second district in the entire state.
I was the first.
Second, there was another one before us, but that's okay, we will, we will take that honor if we need to. And now we have some other districts that are following suit, so when you said that we would lead the way, I still claim it, we are leading the way. And so, thank you, Patty, for all of your work in this effort, in this, in this push for protecting parents and their rights. I will say that you are right, Dr. Moore, in that Indian River County is unique because both Patty Sullivan and Erin Groll, of course, are from Indian River County, so we hold great pride in something is happening here, and so we're just grateful for that. Thank you.
You. Dr. Pasca? Yes. Dr. Pasca?
Yeah, I would just like to also thank Patty Sullivan and her husband for the years of dedication and hard work to get that bill passed, which is really their bill, and it was developed by them through great research and communication with other people, and it is a bill for everyone and every parent, and it protects our rights in a way that unfortunately we need in America right now, because they are under attack every day, and we've seen it over the last several years especially. So, thank you for protecting us, we appreciate you.
Thank you. Mr. Dyer, any words?
Just thank you, I think it's a great bill, and thank you for all your efforts over 12 years.
Thank you to all of our parents out there who come to our schools on a regular basis, whether you're volunteering, reading to students, whether you're in our PTA, our SAC teams, our athletic boosters, every day I think you make a difference in our community, so thank you very much. So, board members, I'm going to call for a vote to approve the parental rights and appreciation proclamation. Do you have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, vote carries five to zero, thank you very much, thank you for being here. All right, next is a report from the superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and if it's okay, I will take them out of order, so I'll start with B, which is a tribute to the life and contributions of Joe N. Idlet Jr., and if that sounds familiar, that is the name of this building and a legend in our community, and we found out earlier this week, while the chair was actually in surgery, that Joe N. Idlet had passed away. So, as a member of a big family, we're here to acknowledge the impact that individual and that family has had on the Indian River community. So, Doc, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening to everyone, a special welcome to the Idlet family, thank you very much for being here. Many of you may know that Joe N. Idlet Jr. passed on Tuesday, October 29th, and tonight we would like to pay tribute to this very, very wonderful man. Mr. Idlet, a legacy of leadership, service, and equality. Mr. Idlet was born and raised in Indian River County in 1933, where his lifelong commitment to education and community service first took root. He attended Gifford Elementary School and later graduated from Gifford High School, institutions that would later benefit profoundly from his visionary leadership and advocacy. Following his graduation, Mr. Idlet was drafted into the United States Army, where he honorably served as a motion picture photographer during the Korean War. His time in service reflected the same dedication, discipline, and excellence that would characterize his life's work in education and civic engagement. In 1974, Mr. Idlet made history by becoming the first black individual elected to the Indian River County School Board. Over the course of two decades, he distinguished himself as a steadfast advocate for educational equality, integrity, and progress. During his tenure, he served three terms as board chair and several additional years as vice chair, guiding the district through periods of significant growth and transformation. His leadership extended beyond the local community. Mr. Idlet held the esteemed position of the president of the Florida School Board Association for one term and represented the state as a delegate to the National School Board Association on three separate occasions. His influence and insight helped shape educational policies, both within Florida and on the national stage. Among his many achievements, Mr. Idlet's most profound contribution was his unwavering pursuit of equal educational opportunities for all students. In 1964, he courageously filed a lawsuit challenging the segregation of schools in Indian River County. His determination and commitment to justice culminated in a historic victory when, in 1968, the courts ordered the integration of the county's public schools. Through his leadership, perseverance, and moral conviction, Mr. Idlet helped pave the way for generations of students to learn and thrive together, regardless of race or background. Mr. Idlet was widely respected for his wisdom and insight, often reminding others that the only thing that is more expensive than an education is ignorance. This guiding principle reflected his lifelong belief in the transformative power of learning and the profound responsibility of communities to invest in their youth. In recognition of his extraordinary contributions, the boardroom of the school district of Indian River County was dedicated in his honor in 2018, a lasting tribute to his vision, leadership, and unwavering service. Beyond his public achievements, Mr. Idlet's personal life was equally rich and inspiring. He shared 71 years of marriage with his beloved wife, Mrs. Bernice Idlet, and together they raised six children, building a family grounded in love, faith, and service. May the legacy of Mr. Idlet, a trailblazer, educator, and advocate for equality continue to inspire the people of Indian River County and beyond for generations to come. Thank you.
Dr. Moore, we're just going to have one member of the family say a few words, Jennifer Idlet, if she wants to come in.
Good evening, Superintendent Moore, members of the board...
It's not on.
Still late, you're good.
Oh, might work, I think I started here.
All right, good evening, Superintendent Moore, members of the board, and all those present tonight. On behalf of the Idlet family, we sincerely thank you for taking the time to honor and recognize our father, Joe N. Idlet Jr. As you've just heard, our dad passed away on Tuesday, October the 21st, at the age of 92, and while our hearts are heavy, we are deeply confident to see this legacy remembered here tonight, in the very place where he dedicated so much of his life's work. My father believed deeply in the power of education to transform lives. He served this district with courage, conviction, and compassion, always striving to ensure that every child, no matter what their background, had an equal opportunity to succeed. His years on this board were not just a position of service, but a calling of purpose and faith. To see his efforts still recognized today is a testament to the lasting impact he made on this community and the generations that followed. We are truly grateful. Thank you for continuing the work that he held so dear, serving students, uplifting families, and building a stronger, more equitable Indian River County. May his spirit of service and faith continue to inspire us all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mommy was right there. Sorry for your loss.
So sorry for your loss. So sorry. All right, thank you very much, we're going to continue now with citizen input.
I have one more.
I'm sorry, Dr. Moore, I'm sorry.
All right, so the remainder of the report is a recap of last month, it has been an extremely busy month in the school district of Indian River County. Now it's going so fast. October 1st was the Community Leaders Breakfast, a number of our board members were there. United Way is an absolutely outstanding organization that we support, and they support the totality of our community, so it was great to be at that breakfast with so many community leaders. Our Moonshot Series, October 2nd, was absolutely amazing, we filled the Performing Arts Center, there wasn't an open seat in the house, and it was the opportunity to have a sneak peek of the documentary of the work that's happening through our Moonshot partnership with the Learning Alliance and the impact that we're having in terms of making sure every student, or 90% of our students by third grade are reading proficient, so they are taking notice of the work that we are collectively doing. It is, it has been Homecoming Month, this is the parade at Sebastian, we've had to reschedule Vero Beach, but that was me, Doc, and Bruce taking the walk with the administrators at Sebastian River Senior High School, and then we had Wired to Learn Fast, we had a number of districts over the course of the last three weeks visit Indian River County, this was a sharing opportunity with Highlands and Seminole County, they both came down, actually that wasn't Highlands, that was Citrus that came down, it was Citrus, and it was Citrus, it was Citrus and Flagler, so you completely threw me off on both of those schools, but they've, they've both been here. And then I had the coffee with the mayor, the opportunity to present an update on the school district, where we are and where we are going. Hispanic Heritage Month was September 15th through October 15th, and just a number of events throughout our county, love the food there. At October 10th, that was the homecoming game, and we had a, I don't know what kind of jet was it, was it a MiG, I mean, what was that, flyover at Vero Beach Homecoming Game, was absolutely outstanding. And then a Day of Caring, which I'm still recuperating from, but so many of us at Pelican Island Classical K-8, the district office all met there, and we put in a day's worth of work and did a number of upgrades for that school, and then we know it was valued when the students came back the next day, here's a picture of them, just at all, of all of the upgrades that we were able to put in at that particular school. And then Wired to Learn Fast, which this was Datacom, and this is when Highlands was with us, and they had the opportunity to sit in and evaluate how we do this data-focused conversation to improve instruction across the system, so we were glad to have them there. And the Crown Jewel, thank my staff and Doc for coming out, because this is a lot of running to pass out the awards, the awards from one five-yard line all the way to the next five-yard line, so it was absolutely easy this year because I had a whole bunch of support there, and the performance is absolutely outstanding. We all know Vero Beach is continuing to grow, so we were able to watch their performance, and they did not compete, they were the host school, but Sebastian did compete, and they, you see all the awards standing in front of them, they did absolutely outstanding. We had our delegation day, had the opportunity to present on our concerns that we want our legislators to address back in Tallahassee, and shared a number of those concerns that same evening at City of Sebastian, and then this is another two districts that came in, and this is Sarasota and Martin County, who came to look at the work that we're doing on how we created our Pelican Island Classical Magnet, so it was great for our team to walk them through that process, as they are going to be replicating the work that we have done, and we certainly pointed out the adoption process for curriculum to make sure that they got that correct. The very next day was the Town of Indian River Shores, once again, providing an update to Indian River Shores and sharing our concerns as well as our growth over the last year. And then what was Military Appreciation Day, last Friday, the same MiG flew over, they flew over much lower, absolutely outstanding, fun military game for them, and they're looking forward to hopefully going to the playoffs. And that is the month in review, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Moore.
All right, now we will go into citizen input guidelines. These are the procedures for public input according to the School Board Policy 169.1. During regular business meetings of the board, the board offers the following two opportunities for the public to provide input, on an agenda item, consent, and/or action prior to the board talk, taking official action on a proposition, and two, during the public input section just for general items. For those who are watching, please understand that though we have established proper decorum and expectations of professionalism when it comes to individuals who wish to provide public input, this is a live broadcast. Each individual speaker shall be allotted up to three minutes during public input, in up to three minutes, to an item on the consent agenda and/or action agenda as indicated on the order of business as it exists at the time the meeting starts. The time period may be adjusted by the presiding officer. Individuals may only speak once about a given item, individuals who have filled out the speaker's form are allowed to address the board. Individuals may not delegate, there are a lot of time to speak to other individuals. If an item is moved from either the consent agenda or discussion agenda in the action agenda, individuals will have the opportunity to speak to the item prior to a vote on the board. During the meeting, please refrain from clapping or outbursts of any sort so that we can protect with dignity and decorum by not infringing on any individual's First Amendment rights in the limited public forum setting. As the board members listen to individuals without interruption, individuals are asked to give board members the same respect. Board members may or may not address any individual statement at the end of the public input comments. I will be recognizing and calling up individuals two at a time in the order in which the speaker forms were received. The first individual will be called to the podium to speak, and the second individual will be in the line to speak. The executive assistant to the school board will be the official timekeeper, and the time shall start when the speaker is at the podium. As you will see, the time clock is visible to your left on the dais, you will hear a beep at the end of your three minutes. If you have anything to give to board members or the superintendent, please do so through our executive assistant, Ms. Morey. Our first speaker is Mae Asensio, followed by Dr. Margie Flanagan.
Everyone listening today, if you can imagine that a new law was passed, and very few legislators seem to have reviewed it before voting on it, and few people paid attention to it once it passed, but the new law would allow me to move into the empty bedroom in your house, but not as a tenant, because a tenant would pay rent and their share of the expenses, instead, I would give you a roll of toilet paper every month, and you, the homeowner, per this new law, would have to cook and feed me, clean my room, change the placement of outlets on the wall to my specs, pay for the electricity and water that I use, and if I get bored of that room, provide another unoccupied room for me at no cost. Wouldn't you try everything that you could to change that law? Well, I'm speaking today because there are changes to state Senate Bill 2510 that took effect this year that has similar mandates but on our schools. The more I heard, the more I realized that the organization called the School of Hope has been given too much power in this bill. This organization can request to take over a school, make it a school of hope, and implement their program, it is called colocation. One of the recent changes in the law would allow schools of hope to be able to request colocation within a school that has decreased enrollment or are failing. Now, none of our schools are failing, but we do have schools that are low in enrollment. but we do have schools that are low in enrollment. So there are many counties in Florida that are at risk for School of Hope taking over their facilities. The bill is allowing an NGO, Schools of Hope, to use our facilities and receive services at no charge to them. They only need to pay for the teachers that they hire. You may be asking, well, what curriculum would they use? Well, it is not known, other than it does not have to be the one that our county uses. They're not required to tell us, providing us with little to no transparency. What services are they entitled to under this law, you may ask? Well, pretty much everything needed to run a school: cafeteria, student resource officer, nurses, transportation. If they want to open for summer school or even on a weekend, and Indian River County schools are not open, we still must provide those services for them during that time per this law. They will use our tax money to be in our facilities and run their classrooms, taking away funds from our schools and our students, but have no accountability to us. They will be getting charter funds, School of Hope funds, and our tax dollars while having minimal operational expenses. We'll be paying for that part. I'm saying all this to encourage everyone here and online. Please contact your state legislators and state senators before the January legislation session begins. Tell them to remove the collating and no-charge sections of this law. This is a nonpartisan issue. No NGO should be given this amount of autonomy and power over our schools and school funding. Please let us all work together to get this law changed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Asensio. Dr. Margie Flanagan, followed by Margaret Murray.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Margie Flanagan, Chair of Education Champions. Tonight, I'm here to oppose the recently passed expansion of the Schools of Hope that allows private charter schools to co-locate in existing public schools at local district expense. While we know our board and district have strongly voiced their concern about Pelican Island Classical Magnet being targeted for co-location, we have many parents and community members unaware of the devastating impact the bill has on our state's public schools and the students and families served. As background, the Schools of Hope expansion passed on June 16th at 10 o'clock PM on day 105 of a 60-day legislative session and was slipped into the budget package, sidestepping the normal vetting procedures for legislation. A similar proposal had already died during the regular session. This month, Florida school districts began receiving letters from private charter schools announcing plans to co-locate within district buildings. Districts have a mere 20 days to object and very limited grounds to do so. Our district received a request for Pelican Island and has until November 11th to respond. It can be confusing, but the School of Hope legislation and Florida Board of Education's new rule allows private operators to seize public school space, even in successful schools, with no accountability, no transparency, and no local say. Additionally, it allows charters to double-dip, accepting shares of the $5 billion a year voucher program, and then providing charters operational costs at the expense of our under-resourced school districts. It takes more than three minutes to describe the myriad ways charter expansion harms our district, students, families, and communities. But I urge all parents and community members to oppose the new rules and ask Florida legislators, including our local representatives, to repeal the egregious overreach that benefits private, often politically-connected interests at taxpayer expense. Today, it's Pelican Island. Next, it could be any of our neighborhood schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flanagan. Margaret Murray, and then Arlene Jamison.
Good evening. My name is Margaret Murray, Vice Chair of Education Champions. Tonight, I want to speak directly about Schools of Hope, the takeover plan, and what it really means for our community. Thankfully, our school board has spoken with one voice, unanimously asking county residents to contact legislators and voice their opposition to this takeover plan. Let's be clear. This is not an isolated event. It's part of a systematic effort that started by drawing, draining money from our public schools through the voucher program, a program that now costs billions of dollars with no oversight and no accountability, hidden under the name of scholarships. Let me explain. Vouchers are projected to reach $5 billion in the 2024-2026 Florida budget. Yet, 70% of voucher recipients never attend public schools. They were already enrolled in private schools. Only 13% transitioned from public schools. So it's no surprise that the next step is now unfolding: charter schools jumping at the opportunity to take over schools that belong to our community. Tonight, I especially want to speak to parents that, whose children attend our schools and Pelican Island Classical Magnet, and those parents on a waiting list to get into this school. If you band together, speak out, and make legislators know that this is not right, the law can be reversed. If this isn't disrupting and dismantling public education, then I don't know what is. No businessperson alive would call this fair. No one could look at this takeover and not say it's all about profit. And this is not what the taxpayers of this state and of this county want. Our neighborhood schools belong to our children and our community, not to outside interests. Let's fight together to keep Indian River County schools ours. Thank you.
Thank you. Arlene Jamison, and then Dana King.
Good evening. I'm Arlene Jamison from the Education Champions of Indian River County. October was kind of a tale of two movies month. Saw two very different documentaries, but there was a common thread between them: reading. As you heard, the Moonshot film was encouraging, inspiring, even joyful. Not to mention the very cool socks Dr. Moore had on during his interview. But really, all of you, the board, Dr. Moore, the teachers, staff, and the Learning Alliance are to be congratulated and should be so proud of how far you've come. The second film, called Band Together, was not so positive, as some of you are aware. Not to beat a dead horse, but apparently Florida still has the dubious distinction of being the number-one state for banned, or do I need to say relocated books? Kind of reminds me that we're supposed to call vouchers scholarships now. It's just truly shameful that right next to us, in Brevard County, a teacher was faced with death threats and protesters across from her home trying to intimidate her and her family. There was a bright spot in that movie, though. The three high school girls who took it upon themselves to fight back and increase awareness. They attended Pan America conferences, law schools, colleges, and other schools across the country. It's truly too bad that Band Together can't be shown in our high schools, but I understand why. In closing, the Education Champions have been writing and calling the powers that be in Tallahassee to plead against defunding programs for special-needs students, school meals, after-school activities, and the like. Whether they're listening or not is another story, but at least they know we're paying attention. If there are any suggestions for what else we should pursue, please let us know. But after reading the article in 32963, I guess it's obvious. We'll get on it, as well as try to spread the word to encourage others to make their voices heard against this terrible bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Dana King, followed by Zachary Wiggers.
Good evening. I bring to you a heartfelt concern that starts with this question: Why does the district approve and most likely pay for school resource officers who are beholden to 287G? What is 287G? The Indian River Sheriff's Department is a signator of the Immigration and Nationality Act, Section 287, meaning that every school resource officer is deputized by Homeland Security to work under the supervision of ICE with the authority to arrest and detain potential immigration offenders on behalf of the administration, prioritizing the work of the feds over their duty to our children. What is the issue? Well, the need for security for our children is paramount. Florida ranks in the top three states for school shootings, according to Statista. But how safe are hundreds of children who speak with or without an accent, who have brown or black skin, or simply look like they're immigrants? That's all it takes to be detained and/or arrested. Their parents, the same thing. Their grandparents, the same thing. Who is better positioned to know, maybe more than they should, about the children in the schools and their families' immigration status than the Indian River School District Reserve Officers? What if we did the following to help our kids feel safe and actually be safe in schools? What if the school district stopped using and paying the sheriff's department at the end of their contract as a primary resource for safety? And what if we hired private security? And please, the days of the Pinkerton Safety Patrol are way past. Think about the security that protects multimillionaire and billionaire CEOs, and hire them. That's the security that we need, because they are not part of 287G. And they can remain objective and unbiased, and they can keep our children safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. Mr. Wiggers, followed by Dr. Mark Gerber.
Hi there. My name is Mr. Wiggers. I am the treasurer of the Indian River County Education Association, and I am also a teacher at Sebastian River High School, where I teach financial algebra. One of the things I wanted to make mention that is so important is that this is my second year in education, period. This is the only district I've worked for, and it's been eye-opening to see it, how we here in Indian River County treat public education and public government as to we are flexible. We pride ourselves in our flexibility for our advancements in education and our building services and everything we provide here, and I think that's great. I think the other thing that we do is we provide financial flexibility for our school district. With all of the School for Hope talk, one of the things that I think we are most well-positioned for is financial flexibility for our school district and us taking measures well ahead of those that do not and will not make decisions now. If you don't make decisions now, we will be handed the bill at the end of the day. And this school district has, time and again, chose not to be handed the bill. So I want to thank the school district for being forward-thinking and to constantly communicating with the people here and everyone about how we are making these changes and getting community input. One of the things I saw, I was sitting next to two students from Indian River Charter, and they are a community school just like ours. We pride ourselves in our community schools. And I think the most important thing is they're here to meet. They're here to meet. The more students we have here that are in meetings and understand what's going on in their public education and their county government is important for the future of our education. One of the things I wanted to make mention is we talked about, there was numbers thrown out there. For us to understand the totality of money in the voucher system, a billion seconds, if we counted a billion dollars in seconds, it would take us 31 years, eight and a half months. Now multiply that by five, and you're looking at over 150 years every year that we spend in vouchers. The totality of the money that we talk about is sometimes incomprehensible to those that just go, oh, it's a billion, or our federal budget's four trillion. We don't understand what that money really is in an amount. So paying attention to that is most important, understanding that. The other thing I wanted to make mention, the last thing that I will touch on about the legislation coming, is in Section 1002, 333, Paragraph 6, Subsection F of the Schools for Hope, it specifically says, "Schools of Hope operated by a Hope operator shall be exempt from Chapters 1000 to 1013 and all school board policies." I'll leave it there.
Thank you very much. Dr. Mark Gerber, followed by Jennifer Pippin.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Mark Gerber. I'm a resident of Vero Beach. This month, the National Education Association, which is the largest teachers' union in the country, sent out 3 million packets of information to its members and others. The packets contain blatantly anti-Semitic and anti-Israel material. It includes things such as erasing the state of Israel from the map of the Middle East. It justifies the October 7th massacre in which 1,200 men, women, and children were raped, tortured, and murdered. And it denies the Holocaust by omitting the fact that Jews, 6 million Jews perished in the Holocaust, although they mention other groups. This is gross and vile distortion of the truth, and it is not education, it is indoctrination. And it is unmitigated hatred and lies, and it's shocking that an American union, that National Teachers Union, would put out this sort of information. I am bringing this to the attention of the Board of Ed and the Superintendent of Schools to make sure you're aware of it. And I would like to know what assurances the board and the superintendent can give to the public to make sure this type of hatred and anti-Semitism does not make it into our classrooms. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much, Dr. Gerber. Jennifer Pippin, followed up by Lamar.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Pippin, and I'm the proud chairman of Moms for Liberty here in Indian River County. I first want to say Happy Parental Rights Month, and thank you to the district for recognizing the fundamental rights of parents in education. I also want to extend my heartfelt congratulations to Jackie Rosario for being selected as a state chair of the Florida School Board Coalition. This is a tremendous honor and a true testament to our leadership, integrity, and unwavering dedication to putting students and families first. We are so proud to see Indian River County represented through her strong leadership at the state level. Next, I want to thank this board for taking a clear and principled stance on sending a letter to the county commission opposing the proposed detox center near one of our charter schools. Protecting the safety, security, and well-being of our students must always come first, and your advocacy made that very clear. On behalf of parents and community members and Moms for Liberty who voiced their concerns, thank you for standing up for our children. I also want to share some exciting updates about our student involvement and leadership with Turning Point USA chapters opening in five of our local high schools starting this month or next, including Vero Beach High School, Sebastian River High School, Masters Academy, Indian River Charter High School, and St. Edward's Upper School. These student-led organizations promote civic engagement, leadership, and a love of country, values that strengthen our community and our schools. For our teachers, I would like to highlight the Teachers Freedom Alliance, a professional organization that empowers educators to stand for their values and professionalism without having to belong to the traditional teachers' union, which has increasingly aligned itself with partisan, liberal, and political causes at the local, state, and federal levels. Teachers deserve true choice and representation, and the Teachers Freedom Alliance provides exactly that. You can join and learn more, teachers, at www.teacherfreedomalliance.com. Finally, I encourage everyone to watch a documentary called 15 Days: The Real Story of America's Pandemic and School Closures. It's a powerful and eye-opening film that examines what really happened to students, parents, and teachers during COVID. I'm proud to share that Indian River County is one of the featured locations in the film with Tiffany Justice, a former school board member here. This film was created by a progressive liberal turned independent who exposes the National Teachers Union agenda behind COVID school closures. It's a must-see for anyone who truly cares about... It's a must-see for anyone who truly cares about truth and transparency in education. Thank you, and have a great evening.
Thank you. And our final speaker, Lamar.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. I just want to affirm you, and I want to thank you for your Declaration of Parental Rights. There have been many situations where schoolteachers and counselors have violated parental rights with devastating and lifelong consequences, such as abortions or sex changes. And so I want to thank you for reaffirming parental rights. Parents indeed do know best what's in the best interest of their children. I'm also excited about the new classical school and the acknowledgement that children learn differently and deserve to have a variety of options for their education. In this regard, competition is a good thing. Vouchers have helped to provide underserved communities with educational opportunities they could not previously afford. My children were educated at home, private charter, and public schools, but when I homeschooled, I had to pay for all of my children's materials. I'm glad that parents who cannot afford materials are now getting some financial assistance. However, from what I've recently heard about Schools of Hope, I'm very troubled. I think the first time I heard about it was when Dr. Moore spoke at the legislative delegation meeting, and I share your concerns, and I want to give a shout out to May. She did such a great job just explaining how that's going to work. And it's not something that we want, and I do intend to reach out to my legislators and ask them to fix the loopholes in this bill. I'm sure it was well-intended, but with devastating consequences. So I will be looking to some of you also for guidance on how that wording should, what wording we should use when we communicate with our legislators. So thank you very much for taking these really positive steps to do what's in the best interest of our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to all of our speakers, and I'm sure board members will have a few words to say, but Dr. Moore, I'll give you the first opportunity. I know you have talked about Schools of Hope, and I'd like the attorney to also speak a little bit because she did send a letter after we had that request, just so people know the timeline there. So, Dr. Moore, the floor is yours.
I was gonna address that and a little bit more during the item.
Okay. You want to wait for that? Okay.
But you wanted to talk through that letter?
Oh, sure.
Just so the parents know the timeline and so forth.
Yes. So right now, the building notice that we received was a little premature. The rule itself is 6A 1.0998271. It's called Schools of Hope. It was updated to reflect statutory changes that many of the speakers addressed in Section 1002.333. Essentially, the timeline is a little bit off. The plain language of the new rule states that the building notice may be sent prior to the notice of intent, beginning on the date 14 days after the effective date of the revisions to the rule. They were adopted on September 24th of 2025. The Florida Department of Education filed the rule with the Department of State on October 8th of 2025. It then takes effect on October 20, it's October 8th, October 20 days later, October 28th. And so 14 days after October 28th is November 11th, which is 14 days after when the building notices can be sent. So the response that I sent back to the charter school that sent us the building notice just essentially let them know that their building notice was untimely, but I do anticipate that those building notices will probably come out November 11th.
Thank you. Chair Berenberg, do you have anything you'd like to add or feedback after the citizen input?
Yeah, there's a lot of good, there was a lot of good input. I'll address the Schools of Hope. I've attended two different meetings in the past couple of weeks with FSBA chairs from all the different districts that received the same letters. We were invited at the last second to a meeting to discuss what the letter said, which schools they were affected. We only had one school. There were several that had several schools, but of course, those were premature letters. We know that more are coming. The call has gone out to everyone to get the news out, get it out into your community, get parents on board. These were Schools of Hope bill that was promoted last year, was done in two different locations, the Senate and the House, had different versions. And that got merged at the last second into another bill that became what you call a train bill, lots of different things added to it. And it was done, like you said, very late at night in the last section. I don't know if people that were voting for it really understood what they were truly voting for or not. And that was one that we were paying attention to last year, and we weren't sure exactly how it was going to come out. So it is upsetting to see what's going on. It is so, I'm so thankful for our board to be together on this and to say, you know, we gotta stop this. This is not right, taking over schools and property without having to pay anything and then not follow any of our rules. You know, that's kind of crazy. So I appreciate everyone who's contacting their legislators, who saying things. I have done the same, and I know there's already talk in Tallahassee about some changes. So I'm looking forward to that, and I hope that does happen. I also like to say to Dr. Mark, I want to make sure I got this right, is it Gerber? He brought to our attention about some statements that were made. I know Dr. Moore will look into that to see if that, how accurate those statements were, if our teachers receive them or not. I look forward to Dr. Moore sending that out to our board members, letting us know where we are with that. So appreciate everyone's input tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosario. Any feedback or input?
Yeah, a couple of things. I'll reserve some of my other comments about Schools of Hope when Dr. Moore speaks on it later on, but specifically with some of the comments that were made today, one of the things that was mentioned was that no charter, that the charters will double-dip. And I just wanted to just clarify that. It's not that they're double-dipping. I think it was a blanket, charters will double-dip. All charters are not double-dipping. This law doesn't allow charters to double-dip. What it basically allows is for two streaming, funding streams for the Schools of Hope specifically. So Schools of Hope charter, only that charter will have two revenue streams, one that is the charter, the regular charter funding, and then the other one, that is Schools of Hope funding. So there are two there. It's not that there is a blanket for all charters because that is not accurate. The other thing that I wanted to talk about, I think there is some conflating of ideas here. The voucher program has nothing to do with the Schools of Hope. Voucher program also has nothing to do with charters in general. Those are two totally different things. So the vouchers, because I keep hearing the vouchers are a reason for Schools of Hope, and if I misunderstood that, that is what I heard. If I misunderstood that, I do apologize. But the understanding is that the Schools of Hope is a result of the voucher program or homeschooling or something to that effect, and that is not true. Schools of Hope were set up because of failing schools across the nation, across the state. Schools of Hope were set up because there needed to be more options going into districts that had failing schools that weren't improving. These are year after year after year of, and if not F schools, you know, certainly D schools over and over again. And so the Department of Education, I mean, the state legislature decided this is what the option would be, create charters and put them in the districts as options for those schools, specifically who are low-performing schools. I keep looking over to our attorney because I want to make sure that I say the right thing. So those two things are too different, and I, in order for us to be able to all get together, be on the same page with this as a community and as a board, I think it's important for us to iron out some of the misstatements so that we can speak the same language, so that we're saying the same things, and our state legislatures can hear the same message, so that this can turn around in our favor, of course. The other thing that I wanted to mention regarding the failing schools that I believe is a concern is not just that some schools are failing or low-performing, but it's also, I think, the bigger question statewide is the grading system. How do we have schools that are A, and yet their third graders are still performing at 66 percentile or 58 percentile? You can just download the district grades that have been, that have been posted, you know, on the Florida Department of Education website, and you can see all of the grades for all of the districts across the state. You know, the, one of the, you can have a B district and perform at 49% for third-grade ELA. I mean, that to me, something's wrong. So either something's wrong with the grading system, or something's wrong with something. But I think that's part of what's happening at the DOE as well, are these deeper conversations about how do we get these low-performing schools to succeed? We're doing great. We have Dr. Moore, but other school districts do not. We just happen to get caught up in the Schools of Hope issue, just like many others, and hopefully we will get out of this, and we will, this too shall pass, is what I'm hoping that will happen. But, so I think there's several things going on here, and everything else, I think I'll leave for a later conversation. I will end by saying I do agree, I'm waiting for Dr. Moore, I don't know if you want to mention it now or not, something about the anti-Semitism comments by Dr. Gerber, if you wanted, Gerber, did I mention that right? If you had anything to say about that now, if not, I look forward to hearing an update on that.
Yeah, we'll have to provide an update because it's absolute news to me.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Poska?
Yes, I would like to respond first to, I believe, some propaganda that one person shared, trying to create an era of fear in our schools that ICE is somehow going to be operating in them. I'm not aware, I'm not aware of there ever being a case or an instance that ICE detained anyone at a school in Florida, so I think that's pure propaganda. Second, I would like to thank Dr. Mark Gerber for bringing that up. I was not aware of that, and, you know, I'm going to take you at face value. You seem like a highly competent individual, that that is obviously what they sent out, the National Teachers Association, which it's very scary if you really stop for a moment and think about it. It's a very powerful organization. It's led by a lot of extremely powerful individuals that are highly connected to a lot of stuff. And it's really, if you put your finger on the pulse of America, it should scare everybody because it tells me that that's kind of where we are, and overnight, things could be in a very bad place. So I appreciate you bringing this to our attention, and, you know, I'm not surprised that the National Teachers Union thinks that because they believe a lot of really, really wacky things. But I'm very surprised they were dumb enough to say it. So I really hope there's lawsuits and other means to correct that issue, and something can be done about it. But thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you. Mr. Dyer?
Yeah, I mean, it's been interesting. I was just thinking, I always wondered if there was going to be an issue that could unite the community on something. So it looks like we've all found Schools of Hope. I think it is really bad legislation that is going to really affect Florida public schools. And so any, everything that we can do to stop it before it gets started and to get the legislature to reconsider, I think is the right thing to do. I would like to say that I do agree with Jackie that vouchers and the Schools of Hope are two different things. However, the way they are connected is that there is a general feeling that public schools are being defunded and public schools are being minimized over other opportunities. I have no problem with homeschooling, private school, whatever school you want to go with. If a kid is in a public school and they choose to go somewhere else, the funding goes with them. The problem is, it's an unfunded mandate by the state, and they are taking money from kids that are in public school and giving it to those that choose private or homeschool, which is not what it was intended to do. It was intended to get kids out of failing public schools. So that is the loose connection. They're all part of a defunding and disruption of public education. So that, to me, is a big concern. I also would like to say, I too was pretty shocked by what Dr. Gerber had to say, and while I am not surprised again by the National Teachers Union from other things that I have seen, I can tell you that our teachers and our teachers' unions here, we're in a really good place. We've got teachers that care about the kids. And I haven't seen any of that, but I would be absolutely shocked and horrified, and I agree that we should get into it rather deep and see what's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Dyer. Just a few words. When I was at the state association, I dealt a lot with laws, and you saw many, many laws slip in around 10 o'clock at night, and that's how a lot of these things go through. So they didn't get it past us. You know, I think if we work hard together, it'll be very, very important for this district. We're not a failing district. We don't have, you know, we don't even have C schools. You know, we went from 38th to 5th, A three years in a row, and believe me, that's going to be hard to maintain, but we're still working very, very hard. So I don't think we fit in this category. Call your governor, call your commissioner of education, call your senators and representatives. I have done so because I think it's important to know that, again, we're, I understand where Schools of Hope started and why they want to have them, but we're not failing. Our students are doing well. You know, whether we agree with all the DOE guidelines, how schools are graded, that's changed a lot in the last 15 years, but no matter what, we're all graded on the same. So at least it's equal as far as that. Obviously, I know Dr. Moore will follow up on Dr. Gerber's statements because I too would like to know what the situation is with that. You know, when we were thinking about losing AP money and so forth, people worked hard, and they talked to their legislators, and, you know, things worked out. I'm on a federal legislative committee, and we just met last Friday with the FSBA. And I said, "Do you think we're going to get any more Title I cuts?" And they said, "Yes." And see, those are the things that scare me because our Title I schools, all of our elementary schools are Title I, except our Magnates in Beachland. Three out of four of our middle schools are Title I. The only reason our high schools are not Title I, because the kids don't fill out the forms. They don't want to fill out the forms anymore to say they want free and reduced lunch. We're a district that has great philanthropy, and we have a lot that struggle. So just keep our fingers crossed on that one because I just said basically to our federal representative, "Come down and see what we're doing and see what our kids are doing." So hopefully, they'll think about it instead of just saying, "We have to do this." As far as the law, 287G, I'd like Dr. Moore to follow up on that with Jaime. The one thing that we talked about at this school board is we want our kids protected. We want to make sure our kids are protected. And knowing our school resource officers and how close they are to our children, I believe we are, but obviously, we need to follow up on that. But I want to thank the speakers tonight because I think we all have the same mission. You know, we, as Ms. Rosario and Mr. Dyer and Dr. Poska said, you know, we're in that world of charters and Schools of Hope and vouchers, and it's kind of all hitting us now. And what will happen, what I did find, and I spoke at the legislative delegation last week, you know, we know vouchers are the law. That's it. We understand that. But how are they accountable? And I have talked to Representative Brackett and Senator Groll about that, and they did listen. And we have right now, in our school district, 200 students who took the voucher but are in our public schools. And there are thousands in the state like that, so we've got to get accountability for that. That's a must. So I want to thank the board, I want to thank all of our citizens for speaking tonight, and we'll probably continue about Schools of Hope in just a little bit. All right, so we're now going to consent agenda items. Okay. Call for motion to approve the consent agenda items as amended?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? I'll vote on the approval of the consent agenda items as amended. Say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. No one opposed. All right. Now we go from items pulled from consent to Now we go from items polled from consent to action. And Dr. Moore, we had one item polled by Ms. Rosario as five E. The topic is technical corrections, so I'll let you give a recommendation first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Dr. Jacobs will present the item.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board. This item is brought to you in accordance with School Board Policy zero one three one point one, Technical Corrections. That policy enables, uh, the board to make technical corrections, um, to policies that are non-substantive in nature without going through the whole entire rulemaking process. So, in this item, you will see the technical corrections that are being made. Um, two specific board policies, a lot of these technical corrections are either, um, capitalization, additions, uh, statutes, um, some other, um, language that's been added, uh, as far as board policies. Where a board policy has changed and now is embedded, the title's embedded into another policy and the titles didn't exactly match. Um, and so you will see those reflected in the markup that you received as part of your board packet.
All right, thank you, Dr. Jacobs. Ms. Rosario?
Yeah, um, I, um, I'm in favor of these. I, I pulled it because I thought that this was an item worth discussing. One of the things that dawned on me, um, um, until this meeting was actually potentially codifying this into policy instead of keeping it in resolution. Um, maybe at some point we need to talk about just adding this language to our, uh, policy development stage. Of course, uh, I see you have the mic.
I'd like to jump in there. It was a perfect segue because I knew you were going to ask me, "Don't we have a policy that talks about technical corrections?"
Thank you.
Through the chair. Yes, go ahead.
We do, we actually have, this is under Policy zero one three one. We've had it, actually, it was actually adopted in two thousand thirteen. But it specifically, I don't believe that we've actually taken advantage of it, but it specifically talks about technical corrections. That would include consolidation of sections, transfer of sections, combining or dividing sections, renumbering sections, chapters, titles, corrections, additions for grammatical or typographical errors, alterations and emissions, updating the names of individuals who serve as district compliance officers, anything that does not affect the constructions or meaning of those sections, subsections, chapters, titles or policies as a whole, and they're non-substantive. So, we have that policy in place. This is just a method of not going through the entire Chapter one twenty process, which, as you know, is very, very lengthy. Um, I don't believe, I think we were talking about, um, we had a technical correction. If you remember, there was a typo in one of our policies that said grades, whatever, K through twenty-eight or something, and we know we don't have twenty-eight grades. Um, uh, so I guess we just look at them and make sure they are truly technical in nature and not substantive. If there's any question that they may be deemed to be substantive, I'm going to recommend that it go through the Chapter one twenty process.
Okay.
So, but this is new and, and our policy specifically says that should the board choose to make such technical corrections, it may be accomplished by resolution as part of the consent agenda without going through the normal policy adoption procedure. And so that's how we ended up with, uh, our resolution that's before you today.
I may have missed some, something, somewhere along the line, uh, but that makes sense. So, moving forward, anything that is of technical correction will go through this process. But just to be clear, it'll still come to the board for review and, you know, and, and workshopped and all that other kind of stuff. But then it'll follow this process, um, instead of... Does the policy have, uh, resolution? Does it have this in there?
Yes, it says it may be accomplished by resolution as part of the consent agenda, which is why staff is, we were, I said, "So, have you ever done that before?" No, they haven't. So, that's why, that's why it does, I, I'm glad that you pulled this because it is unique in that it hasn't, you guys haven't used that before, but it's completely authorized because it's non-substantive.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other board member discussion? Okay, so I call for a motion for approval of technical corrections to board policies. Need a motion? Make a motion?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Carrie's five zero. Okay, our last action agenda item. Dr. Moore, discussion of operational innovation and efficiency planning initiatives and approval to waive, extend the deadline in policy fifty-one twenty-one, controlled open enrollment. Dr. Moore, the floor is yours and then we'll go into discussion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The action within this item is to simply extend the choice window. We have a policy surrounding choice, uh, has a start date and a specific end date, January fifteenth off the top of my head. What this will do, the action that you would take tonight, is to push that to February sixth and that would allow schools an extended amount of time to advertise their programming, given, um, changes to boundaries and/or programming as it relates to the innovation work. In order to have the conversation, I think it's best to kind of bucket the Schools of Hope conversation first because at, at the end of the day, um, this action item is not in response to Schools of Hope. This action item is in response to the need to innovate and transform our school system and to do it in a way in which we can take care of our people. So, there is a true concern. And I came in, in, in two thousand nineteen, I asked our faculties, I asked our support staff to go on a journey with me. And that journey was to reinvent a public school system, to put a stake in the ground, um, and make decisions that were in the best interest of children. And it has been a extremely long, hard tote or time that we've been at this work. Not everyone had a, a like mind. Not everybody was up to that task. But where we sit today, um, finishing, um, year, year five, we have truly been a beacon of hope for all other communities to look at. And it's blood, sweat and tears at every level of the organization that makes our outcome what our outcome is. Yes, Dr. Jones, we went from thirty-eighth to fifth. Uh, we went from thirty-eighth and third grade reading to second in the state. We went from fifty-seven in middle school acceleration to two-three-four in the state. We went from an eighty-nine graduation rate to ninety-six, uh, percent. You know, we eliminated, um, every single C, uh, every, C schools, like it was referenced. We, we don't have C schools. Um, and five years ago, A schools were reserved for our magnet schools in Beachland. Those are the ones that were allowed, uh, to have As and the perception, the belief was, no one else could be. So, we've changed the narrative in terms of what we can do in our school system. So, as we walk into what is Schools of Hope, it is extremely upsetting in a lot of ways disrespectful. We, as a community, have transformed our system. Low-performing schools, I get it. If you have a school in, in your community that is not in service of the children within that community, uh, give someone else a shot. At face value, I think we all can say, "Okay, that's fine, great." But we don't even have C schools. So, the, the game has changed. A school identified as persistently low-performing school used to be a rating of a number of Fs, Fs or Ds within a time period. Now it's simply the lowest ten percent of reading or the lowest ten percent of math scores identifies you as a low-performing school. So, the expansion of who are low-performing schools still not in Indian River County has drastically changed. The addition of the opportunity zone, which for us is everything west of ninety-five. There's not a lot of homes or houses west of ninety-five. We have one school west of ninety-five, which is Felsmere. And Felsmere is a longstanding A and a beacon, um, of hope in that community. When folks in that community have an issue or a concern, they go to the school and they ask to see the principal, uh, and the teachers and the staff to help them solve their, their issues that they're having, whether it's related to school or not. We currently have a, a district at seventy-four percent. Our overall district sits at around seventy-four percent.
Occupancy.
Occupancy.
Thank you.
Which means, oh my goodness, we're primed to come in and have our schools taken over. The analogy of the home, I'm sorry, but I'm going to steal that one. I, I, that and the time and the money, two great analogies that I am going to, I'll give credit where credit is due, but I am going to tell both of those stories, uh, over and over. But to have students go from one hallway to another hallway, we lose that funding, we lose that accountability and, as referenced, we pay for everything. That will bankrupt our system. And this would be an A school. This would be a school that used to be a C, has transformed and has gone on a jury, journey to provide high-quality education. So, based on tonight's conversation, and I can reference everything that the board has said, uh, fully united, fully committed. I, I do think there's recommendations and key language that I need to provide to our community, provide to our board, uh, so we are hitting on the same beat. And we're saying, "This is why these things need to change because in Indian River County, um, we have quality education." This is a board that shifted to a complete choice district. So, it's not a fight, uh, as it relates to choice. We embrace choice. Every single school in this district is a school of choice, uh, with transportation attached to it. This is a board just three weeks ago, uh, two or three weeks ago, uh, took a stance, uh, in support of one of our community's charter schools. That may seem normal for us or for those who have lived in this community for a long time, but as a public school superintendent, that's not the norm. It's not the norm. So, Schools of Hope is not a stopping point for us. It's not an opportunity where we pause, it's an opportunity where we pull forward. It's an opportunity where we talk in one voice regarding, um, if you have to have Schools of Hope, that's great. Service children in your opportunity zone. Service children in failing and fragile schools. And if a community doesn't have those things, you shouldn't punish the system that's providing or already providing quality education. It's just not fair. If there is not change and one of the six Hope operators send us that letter, it would be drastic change and reform of our system in order to sustain our funding and sustain our financial stability. We're not going to let that happen, though. We are going to be responsive and we are going to continue our transformation journey collectively and together, which is a big piece of what this item is. So, Madam Chair, I'll stop there. Uh, I don't know if board has additional comments or concerns regarding Schools of Hope, but I think it's very clear, uh, I will have staff work together to put something, um, more than just the additional, we, we added to our legislative priority to, to change and modify, um, School, Schools of Hope. That's straightforward language. I think we need additional, um, kind of additional cadence in order to ensure that we're all talking very specifically about what the solutions would be, uh, to protect our community and our community schools.
And after, if a board member wants to discuss, you'll then go into detail about what we need to do?
Yeah, I, if, if I can't provide you the information to, to speak, uh, intelligently about the concerns and issues and how it impacts us, then that's, that's shame on me. So, it is putting together that information. So, when you're in the community or you're advocating, uh, from a Tallahassee standpoint, you have exactly, um, not only pointing out the problems, that's great. I think our community did a great job tonight pointing out problems. We need to be proffering solutions.
Thank you. Ms. Rosario?
Uh, okay, so, trying to figure out where to start from here. Um, so I've talked with a few people from the Department of Education and, um, the short of the long of it is that I think that they are, uh, not only aware, but they are planning to revise the rule, um, hopefully sometime very, very soon. How, how they're going to revise it, I don't know. Um, but certainly it is clear that the biggest change has to happen, uh, from the legislatures. Um, that legislation has to happen in order to remove, um, a few things. For me, the biggest things in all of this is, um, the no cost. You know, uh, as far as I'm concerned, let them pay their way, just like all other charters. Um, the other thing is the co-locating, two very big asks there. And then, um, I have another one with removing Florida opportunity zones. I think those are, um, the big, the major three, um, items. Everything else, um, seems to, although it may not directly impact us because we are, um, I mean, it, it may, but although it may not have as great of an impact for us here in Indian River, we're a smaller county, we have, uh, we don't have any low, uh, performing schools. We do have, um, opportunity zones, but, um, I, I still think that we should, um, still band together, lock arms because this is an issue that's going to affect all of Florida. Um, I do not believe, um, that we should take our eye off the ball and think that at any moment, they're not going to come here because they may very well, that may very well happen. Um, I think also, uh, I sent a, an email, um, to the Department of Education that was pretty thorough. Um, I, I do believe that Dr. Moore should list, kind of itemize all those things that are in the rule. Just itemize them in the rule, itemize the things that are in sta-, in the statute specifically. It's not just the statute because the statute has been here for several years. We've had it already. Um, it, the, the, the changes are what are the issue. It's the recent changes, the recent things that have been added to the statute and therefore have caused, um, the DOE rule to be written the way that it is written. Um, so, I, I do believe that an itemized list, you know, this is an issue and here is a potential fix. Here is an issue and here is a potential fix. Here is an issue and here is, um, a, a way of, of solving it. If we can provide that, um, you know, for some people who, who, who write policy, they might be able to say, "Well, there it is, you know, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. Um, here are some clear, um, some clear guidelines." And that's exactly what we need. Um, I think also having conversations with the people that make these decisions and really insisting on having not just a summary of, "Please change this," but a detailed discussion about how this will impact us or other schools and other districts um, so that they can see. Because from the surface, you speak to people and they say, "Well, you know, Schools of Hope is a good idea because it's going to go in and, you know, they're going to support failing schools." Well, sure, in a perfect world, that would be fantastic. But I think a blanket rule for every district throughout the entire state is not effective. Um, and that's really where we have to kind of, um, explain to people that it's not just a one-size-fits-all. We have to really be able to have local control. And we have to be able to say, "This is what is going to work for us." You know what? There might be some districts that need the support. Maybe Schools of Hope would be, you know, a, a good change for some districts. You never know. Um, for this district, no. We don't need it here. We don't, um, we don't particularly, um, believe that it is, it is necessary. Um, and so that's really where I find the issue. So, Dr. Moore, I fully support, um, a full list. I mean, even if it's booklet style, whatever it is, you know, that's got to get the attention of those in the DOE and if you can copy and paste that for our legislature, legislators, um, I think that's very, very important. I, I can't think of anything more pressing right now, um, than that. Um, I also want to say that as a board member, I also, I hope that the board is, um, is supportive of this as well. As a board member, I want to say that I fully support moving forward in all of our plans, no matter what. We have a district to run and operationally, it is up to us, it is incumbent upon us to move forward with the, whatever plans you have that you're going to present in innovation. We're just moving forward with it. Our plan should not stop just because we receive a letter. Just because we receive a, a building of intent letter does not mean that we have to stop everything that's in front of us. The building letter of intent is just showing us their interest. There is no contract signed, there's nothing else in the works there. It's just their interest. And for that, I think we should just move forward. Um, the other things that I, I, I really want us to kind of nail down is the messaging. The messaging is, if they ask for a school information or a, a letter of, of, of interest of whatever it is that they ask, two big questions that I have. Number one, is it a school that is a low-performing school as defined by the law? And two, is it a Florida, uh, opportunity zone? If it is none of those two things, the answer is no. Sorry, we don't have any facility for you. They can find their own facility. But we have to be able to stick with the letter of the law at this point until the law is changed. I do hope and pray that a... I do hope and pray that a miracle will happen, and that, you know, the state, the legislatures will, legislators will be able to recognize that this is an issue and needs to change now, not next year.
Thank you. Chair Berenberg, would you like to make any comment? Just don't want to forget you.
I think I already did on this, but I just wanted to say that I know FADS and FSBA are getting their attorneys together to come out with some talking points and some messaging that they're going to send out to school board members. So, that information's going to be coming out to you soon.
Thank you. Dr. Paska, anything else? Mr. Dyer?
Yeah, I would just like to add that one of the things I neglected to say is this law, we talked about done at 10 o'clock at the end of session, and then slipped through the Finance Committee, was written by lobbyists for Success Academy and Ken Griffin, and who's Citadel, who's been behind Success Academy. And it really is something that they want to make, they've been very successful in New York, and I guess they want to bring their New York style of education to Florida, and see how that works for us. Success Academy has done some good things in New York, but again, I think that just the whole way this thing goes through does not smell of a law that was well thought out or well-written, like several of the other laws that have been recently passed in education. I believe, I think the way the law was written, from what I remember, is it said that the school had to be greater than a B school, which means that the only schools that are exempt from being accepted, I think, was A schools. So, or maybe it was greater, I think it was greater than a B.
No. It's a school that has earned three grades lower than a C in at least three of the previous five years that the school received a grade, and has not earned a grade of B or higher in the most recent two years.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else, buddy?
I think, I think that's it. Again, I think that we need to get the talking points, and it really is going to take, it's just more than a couple of associations, talking to the legislature. I think this is one that really needs a community support behind it, and it seems like that we've got the community united, at least in our county.
Right.
And I'm hoping, I've seen it in other counties throughout Florida, I think that they're going to be the same. And I think it needs to be a groundswell of really constituents of various school systems and parents, talking about what this law is going to do to public education.
Just a couple of comments. I was looking back at the September 29 minutes, and I brought up a topic of transportation, and I veered off of that a little bit. I said, you know, with Dr. Moore saying, we are at 74%, we've got some changes. We've got some work to do, and we know what we need to do, to make sure that we are creating the system, and nobody's creating it for us. That's number one. One thing I always ask for, and I've talked to our representatives, is, again, more flexibility as a high-performing district. And I think we want to continue to push that, especially with our ranking. And obviously, we're accountable to our taxpayers in every standard. So, you know, Dr. Moore, I know we've got some work to do, so we're here to listen to you, and get it out to our community.
All right. Thank you, and I'll push that out. So, this is a presentation, and it has been an ongoing conversation. And just to re-set this up, the driving force is innovation. It is to engage in a conversation, to right-size our system, and expand offering to our families, to our parents, and to our children. The simple reality is, without looking at the PowerPoint, we're a district that sits at 74% capacity. Since I've been here, we've lost approximately 2,000 students. We have downsized the district office every year for the last five years. We have created a school allocation model that allocates teachers based on the number of students that we have. But when you have schools that are at 200 enrollment, you have middle schools that are at 54% capacity, the fact that we've been able to maintain our fund balance, the fact that we've been able to balance the books, is a credit to Mr. Green and staff, and the discipline to the individuals who have the authority to spend funds. I said it earlier, I believe I said it earlier, typically we go through a process at this time, where we look at our budget and ensure that we have the funds reserved in order to maintain our fund balance for that rainy day. And it's typically a quick process. It took a week, and then we had to circle back, and we had to make additional modifications in order to ensure that we are financially stable at the end of this year. There will be districts that continue to wait, and I think there are districts who are currently struggling. The fact that we have so many districts coming to see what's going on is a clear sign that they're nervous and concerned. So, this is a conversation that is proactive. This is a conversation of really, really engaging in what our community wants. And if we do not open our eyes and look at maximizing the opportunities that our community wants, and be willing to change in response to that need, we'll be absolutely just fine. We'll continue to lead the nation, the state, and ultimately, the nation. But if we want to hold true to structures that are not yielding full schools, we will be financially bankrupt. Forget Schools of Hope. Forget about it. We'll make that change, but ultimately, the scholarships are here to stay. Whether there's accountability or not, the scholarships are here to stay, and we will continue over the next couple of years to lose students. And if we don't right-size and enhance what we're offering to our community, then we will shame on us. So, the conversation really is to engage in, how do we reinvent the school system? How do we right-size the system to the number of students that we are serving? And how do we begin to think differently about using our facilities and creating programming to the over 2,000 students that are accessing scholarship dollars? Because I'm telling you, there is a market there that's not being accessed. Parents are taking those dollars, they're homeschooling their children, and they're finding it to be hard and complex work. But there are opportunities for us to reinvent services, and how we use our facilities to begin to reclaim, bring in revenue for our community, to provide a better source, and reconnect to those public dollars that we are losing. It would be significantly different, but when you are homeschooling, and you do a co-op, or you're doing, you know, you might need a facility or place to do it. If you're homeschooling, or you have a micro school, and you want to do a science project, it might be better to do it in one of our science classrooms. If you're doing a research project, it might be better to do it in one of our media centers. If you're in advanced coursework, and you don't feel comfortable teaching algebra, geometry, or calculus, it might be easier for you to access our quality educators in those spaces. And those are some of the ideas that we need to gauge in as we move forward. So, let me run through this. It's going to be, it has been a very, very busy time. I think I covered all of that, the, covered all that. Existing educational programming, extracurricular access, these are the workaround innovation needed for expanded course and acceleration and CTE programming. Some of our adult programming, we only have it in one specific space. I think there's opportunities to expand it in the evening hours across our community to, once again, generate funds and expand the opportunity. Looking at the trends in school choice applications. We turn away in our, and I'll show this in a later slide, we're turning away students because they can't get into our magnet or our K8 schools that now become magnets, while at the same time, continuing to operate schools in areas in which they cannot draw enough students to self-fund the school. When we look at our facilities, and this is a very complex, complex conversation, looking at capacity versus use and total capacity, identifying the age and condition of our schools. Now, we do a outstanding job maintaining our facilities. And you would never know it by the look and the feel in some of these schools, but the cost to maintain a school such as a Rosewood is significant, because it is so old. You drive by, you think it looks beautiful, and it does look beautiful, but the, at the end of the day, the expense to maintain an old facility makes our job to maximize our dollars very, very, very hard. The next couple hides, I'll skip, because it talks about the co-locating and Schools of Hope. This is some of the problems in which we are going to solve over the next couple months. The district, as I said, is at 72% capacity. Traditional middle school capacity, it actually in use right now today is 57%. We have K8s, so that number's going to go down as we add seventh grade to our K8s next year, and it will go down the year after that. If we continue with four under-enrolled middle schools, class size will grow to rates in which the teachers will have a line all the way out the door, because that would be the only way to maintain a balanced budget. We need to evaluate what we're doing with our traditional middle school spaces, and if there are opportunities to expand something that parents want, that's what we should do. You have four elementary schools. Yeah, okay, well, and looking at our K8 magnet, our legacy magnet schools, 128% incap, in capacity. We shifted them to K8s. We turn away around 90 students at those select schools every year. They apply, that's where they want to go. They don't get in. About 30 to 35 of them never enroll in our schools, kindergartens, kindergartners. So, if we're able to expand the offering and maximize space across our community, we're drawing in students because we have programming that they want. We will look at the use of the four middle schools and bring back recommendations to convert from four middle schools to three middle schools. And we'll look for ways to expand our K8 magnet programming to ensure that we're offering the, have a, something in place in response to the need. When it boils down to currently what we're looking at, Citrus Elementary School sitting at 64% capacity, that's one of the schools that's in a two-mile radius of a number of other elementary schools, we'll be looking at programmatic enhancements and expanding its school zone. Dodger Town Elementary School currently sits at 79% capacity. That's, that's okay, but we will be expanding its zone, because way a long, long time ago, they took part of Gifford, and they itched it out, and sent those kids to Sebastian Elementary School, so it would look as if Sebastian Elementary School had a higher percent of black students attending its school. If those students and families are happy at Sebastian Elementary, that's fine, but I think from a family's perspective, if I'm a single parent, or both parents are working, it's easier to connect and engage in a school that's in my community versus driving on a, what's that bus ride, 27, 28 minutes? That's not, that's not right. Glendale Elementary School is at 56% capacity. What's not on there is the number of students who are choice into that school, the number of pre-K programs that are at that particular school. We are adding programs to maintain a school that's still just at 56% enrollment. Osceola Magnet is at 100%, 126% capacity, and we already have explained, we're turning away children and families every single year. So, we're going to look to relocate and expand programming. Rosewood Magnet, same exact scenario, it's at 100%, 130% capacity. That building is extremely old and extremely costly to maintain, so we will look at relocating and expanding programming for that school. Sebastian Elementary School is a magnet, I'm sorry, not a magnet school, but it is a school at 60% capacity, and it already, inside of it right now, has nine?
Pre-K.
Okay, they all gave different numbers. Did y'all see that? Let's go with eight pre-K programs, eight pre-K programs inside of the school. So, if you take those away, it's an extremely under-rolled school. So, we look, we will look to relocate and expand boundary. Gifford Middle School has, is the only middle school that is in fact growing in our community. So, we want to continue to support that growth by expanding the program around the gifted and advanced academic programming across our community. Very specific programming and creating tight feeder pattern approaches from elementary schools into middle schools. If something's working, we need to expand it, and what's happening at Gifford Middle School is absolutely something we need to begin to expand. Oslo Middle School currently sits at 62% capacity. It will be under 50 in two years if we do not do something different. So, we're looking to repurpose or relocate Oslo Middle School. Sebastian River Middle School is currently sitting at 47% capacity. We need to look at repurposing, rezoning, and maximizing the use of that space. It's a beautiful building that many of you have walked, that we need to maximize. Storm Grove Middle School, our newest complete school, is sitting at 54% capacity. Once again, that will be under 45%. Guys, get comfortable. You hear that rain outside. We will be around 45 or lower if we don't do something different. The operational cost of having a separate facility for our freshman learning center comes at a tune of about $1.2 million on an annual basis. There's not many standalone freshman learning centers across the state of Florida. There are a few, but there's not very many. They all would fit inside the main building. That would do us a couple things if we did that. Because in middle schools, we have had such a hard push around the high school courses, about a third of the students at the Flic, who are all highly achieving students, have to get on a bus for second period to drive over for third period. They lose 15, 20 minutes of instruction. Then they have to come back for fourth period, because there's not enough to have a full teacher in that advanced coursework. Our highest achieving students are losing instructional time to get them the advanced coursework that they, we have pushed for them to receive. The vocational programming, and we have some outstanding vocational programming, many of you have walked at our, at our high school. Our ninth graders don't get to start it till they get to 10th grade. And many of these programs require three or four courses to take over your high school experience. It's almost a disservice not to get those students, many of which need to be connected to those courses, in ninth grade. And if we had, we would have $1.2 million in our hands right now, right now, if we'd made this move last year. What does that mean? Budget is balanced, that'd be a 1.2 recurring, additional compensation for our people. IR Prep, and y'all know I love me alternative programming. We are going to have to move that school into the technical college.
Where it used to be?
It is a very small school right now. It is doing a good job of meeting the academic needs. We made a number of instructional shifts to be more flexible in meeting the needs of those particular kids. But if we can connect them to a vocational program and give them access to some of the great programming at that particular school, why wouldn't we do that? And if they earn their way out, they still should be able to go back to their homeschool, if that's what they choose, and continue to share time into that vocational programming. We may have to add some portables at that school to do that, but there's no reason that we can't. A long-term project is Wabaso. Wabaso is a gem in our community, but it's in a very old facility. This probably won't be a year-one initiative, but one of the schools that would be repurposed, or the faculty and staff would move to a different location, expand programming for Wabaso. And Mr. Colstadt does an absolutely outstanding job with limited staff and limited resources, and a lot of those limited staff comes on the size of the school. And then we also need to look at, you know, autism and the programming that we have around Wabaso. There's an opportunity to, I would say, blow up, but drastically expand some of that unique programming at that particular school, and making sure that a campus is full. The work that we've done to this point, and board members know this, is we've gone through and really done an analysis about what we think we can possibly is we've gone through and really done an analysis about what we think we can possibly do. There's more rumors out there than I could possibly imagine. We met with CWA and they actually came in with a list, and I said, "Well, you got most of them. You don't, you don't have all of them, but you have, you have most of them." Starting tomorrow, I will engage with faculties, and I want the opportunity to, to allow faculties to ask me questions, to understand the rationale, and really problem-solve with me. We've met with both executive union teams and gone through the rationale, and we do not want, to quote Dr. Shaffey, "This to feel as if something is being done to anybody. This is something we do together." And when we met with the first round of the teacher union, we left with more questions than we did answers. But we will problem-solve and we will do this together. Some of the programming that needs to be tightened at our schools will be a process of really working with those faculties to create that programming. Some of the facility usage difference, specifically a K eight going into a middle school building, we're gonna have to work with that school community to go into the school and say, "Let's envision this together. You tell me the answer to the solution, we will fund it. We will figure out a way through our capital projects," which we've gone through that capital budget with a fine-tooth comb. We've identified the available resources to make these changes that we will bring back to our board once we figure out the totality of these specific changes. At the end of the day, I want to take care of our people. And I want to show so much respect and love for the individuals who've gone on this journey with me, and I said it at our last workshop. Everything that we've done to this point has put us in this place to do this work. And I look at what we can do to re-envision and pool folks who are accessing public dollars in a very, very different space and how they educate their families. So many districts are beginning that work and they're doing absolutely, completely wrong. They're doing it wrong. We can do it right, and we can use some of our spaces to re-engage and connect and provide services to that community. We want to drastically expand the percent at each, occupancy percent at each school. Our initial evaluation tells us if we look at the people who are currently ours, our family, the people who are in our system, that we can do this work over the next two years and not declare a reduction in force. Take care of our people. Now, if you don't do your job, that's a different story. But if you're doing everything that we ask you to do, we don't have to go through the difficult, unfriendly, confrontational conversation. Had a great conversation with CWA about job descriptions, board approves job descriptions. If, if we just can't hold true to a description, a job description that was created eighteen years ago when the work is drastically changed. And I don't know how to do the work you do. I know how to fund it, but I sure as heck don't know how to, how to do that specific work. But let's engage in the conversation and reinvent the, the way work should be done, given the current reality. And those will be conversations, not just for the next two months, literally for the next two years. And we have proven to each other that we can uphold an expectation, really, really engage in hard, complex conversations, and collectively come together with solutions. I will, starting tomorrow, and for the rest of this week, every school up there, they will have an interaction with me face-to-face, and also meeting with parents in each and every single one of those schools over the course of the next week to engage in conversations, to receive their feedback. Really to listen and understand the complexity of what we absolutely have to do. Then we will begin work to finalize our recommendation. We will hold, over the course of the next five or six weeks, town hall-specific meetings, which is the opportunity, not just for the faculty to engage and receive feedback, not just for the parents, but for the community. And I think that's a, a great opportunity, because at the end of the day, someone may be sitting at home with a child who's not in our school system, but say, "Hey, now that you're expanding the offerings for K eight, I want to get, I, I want to participate in that. Now that you've aligned programming from Vero Beach Elementary School into the middle school, into the high school, I see a clear programmatic path for my child to take for the next thirteen years." We have to stop three different styles of school. You go to kindergarten and there's no connection, I mean, K, your elementary school, there's no connection to your middle school, and the middle school, there's no connection to your high school. Why wouldn't you leave? We've got to strengthen programming in our elementaries, into our middle schools, into our high schools, and strengthen programming into our K eights, into our high schools. The number-one complaint for our, our parents who are loving the K eight space, very limited offering because of size, is, "Oh, man, I love it, but I would really like to have the athletics and activities. I understand, we don't have the facility for it, but we think we can solve that problem." But then we have to align the current middle schools with the K eight middle schools, which brings us to start times and end times. And that's another conversation, once we have all of these variables. I see Beth waving her head because seven oh five is too early. It is too early.
For high school.
For anybody, the exception of Bruce. It is, it is, and Beth, Beth goes to the gym. It's, it's too early. Seven twenty, seven thirty. The challenge that we have, and this is another great example. The buses, fifty percent of our sixty-eight routes end up at Vero Beach. They pick up the kids from Vero Beach, then they drive to high school, then they drive to the Flic. They lose like fourteen minutes. If you looked at our data, our on-time drop-off on the north side of town is in the mid-nineties. If you look on the south side of town, it's, it's not good because we lose so much time. So understanding a reduced number of schools, maximizing routes, and eliminating that fourteen minutes for half the schools on the south side, we can make a lot of parents happy by giving them a little extra time to sleep in, and for our elementary parents, not extending the day another twenty minutes so their kids are getting out so, so late. So my goal is to face-to-face conversations with faculties, with staffs, ongoing task-force-like meetings with our workforce, teachers, support staff to identify the challenges and obstacles. We'll bring an update at the next workshop. We would like to set a public hearing for the schools that would have boundary changes at our November eighteenth?
Yes.
Seventeenth, somewhere in November meeting. All that, that's not an action item, the board isn't taking action. The board is just sending out for public hearing. I will be out, as well as my staff, over the course of that month, really to receive information, receive feedback. And then we'd like to schedule on December eighteenth a special meeting, which would have the sole, December seventeenth. So Jen, if you're watching, yes, that is our wedding anniversary, sorry. To have that meeting to approve the attendance boundary changes. And then I'll work with, with staff at that item, any other changes that we would have. Some of these changes, we think we can do in year one, but I may learn in my conversations and dialogue, this is something that we will have to do in year two. Or this is something that the group of teachers gave me a lot of insight, and it's, it's no longer a good idea, I don't know what the heck I was thinking. And we'll shift and modify. So I know, I know, and when you talk about repurposing a school or closing a school, it's hard, difficult conversations. And coming from a very, very large district, it's not something that I'm new to. The districts fail when they don't communicate. Districts fail when they don't treat people as people who are invested and love that school and love the community. So we will do absolutely that. It will not be a rush process, it will not be a process in which things are happening in isolation. We're probably taking the hardest, longest, most complex way of, of doing this work, but it's the right way. It is the right way. So I'm extremely confident in the ideas. Thank my team, they have really pushed my thinking on the possibilities of what we can do. And we haven't talked programmatically, programmatic shifts and changes, but we're gonna challenge some of our schools to reinvent the experience, the middle school experience, the time they're spending in classrooms. We've got to get away from the bell to bell to bell to bell to bell. Our schools are gonna continue to drop if we can't enhance flexibility. So that is the item, that is the immediate next, next steps. And excited about the opportunities to really, really be a beacon of hope with the school system that is at the highest level of capacity in terms of enrollment, and that high level of capacity in each of our schools frees up the dollars so we can take care of our people.
Thank you, Dr. Moore, thank you. Board member feedback, Chair Berenberg, I'd like to start with you.
Sure, you know, very innovative thinking. We've been, you know, kind of batting us around one-on-one with you, and I know board members are probably relieved that this information is coming out now because there've been a lot of questions out there of, "What are we gonna do? What are we gonna do?" Very innovative, and that's where we need to go with this. There's a lot to think about with the details as far as the money spent on reprogramming and playgrounds being moved and, you know, school signs and, you know, all that. But I think all in all, it's, it's gonna be very positive for our district, very positive for the community, because we're gonna be able to open up areas where other thoughts of educating their kids can happen. And I think that's, that's really, truly embracing choice. So kudos to your team for coming up with these ideas. I know there's gonna be a lot of discussion in the next few weeks, parents that are paying attention to this, or maybe reporters that are paying attention to this that will put out articles, then parents will start to go, "Whoa, wait, what's happening with my school?" So I, I think that we can stay ahead of that and market it the way we need to market it and get that information out that's positive in the right direction. So thank you for this.
Thank you, Ms. Mazzario.
Yeah, it's, there's a lot, there's a lot to take in. I would recommend, Dr. Moore, that we find the benefits and find the positives in this. Somehow or another, that we articulate what those are for community members so that, of course, when you're before parents, you want to be able to say, "Oh, but wait, there's something good that could come out of this." I think that's gonna be important. So some of the things that I've been thinking of, I know at our, at our last workshop, you, you asked us for our input and for some suggestions on some of these innovations. I know that I've, I've talked with you one-on-one on some things. I don't know if we've talked about a tutoring school. A tutoring school.
Tutoring.
A tutoring, tutor, to tutor. Something to think about as well, if not, maybe some tutoring programs or a tutoring center that is open for, for students who potentially, or who might be on voucher, who'd be able to utilize the tutoring center. Indian River State College has a tutoring center for their students and for any of our students as well, but it is an open center. They can come and go from it as they please, as long as it's the, those hours. And for the most part, it, it works well. I know that it helped my son for sure. I will say that something that I have found that is a need, and I get these questions all the time from parents, are, "Who do you recommend for SAT tutoring? Who do you recommend for ACT, CLT tutoring?" I get those constantly, and even the PERT and the CLUT. So if there are any students who, even current high school students, who need something, I think maybe a tutoring center might be something to look into. Expanding Treasure Coast Technical College, right? I mentioned that before, I think, construction, you can never go bad with construction. Or whatever the, the next step is in their phase, in their phasing program. Adult programming for sure. Even at Wabaso, maybe there's an adult transition program that we can keep the kids. They graduate from high school, but then they, they kind of graduate into this adult programming within the Wabaso building. I'd, I'd like to ask, and I'm, I'm probably preaching to the choir, asking what you already know, but if we can please give our parents time before notifying them of whenever the town halls will be for them to show up. We have, obviously, you know, working parents, parents with children who need to find babysitters and all that kind of stuff. So if we give them only one or two days' notice, it might not be enough for them to be able to accommodate attending the town hall. In the event that a town hall is last minute, I have had some parents in the past say, "You know, I still can't make it, what about live sessions?" So it'd be nice to at least have one live where you have, you know, people here and then kind of like school board meetings, show the live town hall for information purposes, of course, to get the word out to anyone who won't be able to attend your town halls in person. Even the recorded sessions, if you, you know, those are somewhat helpful. You mentioned something about vouchers and homeschoolers. I, I, I just, I know you know this, but I just want to say, vouchers are not just for homeschool students, they're also for private school. So parents can opt to choose their, opt to put their kids in a private school as well. But because so many of the programs are so different, you might have part-time private schools, you know, not part-time, they serve like a co-op, you know, you bring your kids Tuesday and Wednesday, and then they're off Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. In that event, something that we might be able to offer might be Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, an alternative, right? Even some of the electives, you know, the art, the field trips, you know, utilizing our, the ELC. All kinds of different things that we might be able to do, to be creative in those areas. And I'm still going to say, over and over and over again, so far, our North County, why are you laughing? So far, our North County Classical School is really doing great, and there is a waiting list there, unless we got everybody in already, I'm not sure. I think there's still a waiting list. Either way, it is something that is needed and wanted and has shown a lot of interest in the community. Having one on the North County and then having a South County Classical School, definitely something that might bring people back. And with that, I look forward to some more supporting this effort and if we ever get to the point of needing to relocate schools, I think reaching out to some community moving companies, I don't know how we would ever, you know, do this, but they might be able to volunteer some of their time for the school district, to be able to do that, to save on some costs. I know we have some that are very, very connected to, with, with children, with families. Those are some things that we might be able to save costs on if needed. So many other things to think about, this is. A what?
It's exciting.
It's exciting. But there are a lot of unknowns, and so I, I trust that we'll be able to, to address those as transparently as we can, as quickly and transparently as we can.
Thank you, Ms. Mazzario, Dr. Poska.
Thank you for the presentation. This is a long time coming, we've been discussing improving efficiency and cost-saving measures, and I'm very happy that you guys are taking it very seriously and are coming up with a big plan to improve things. And, you know, I'm gonna be honest, that, you know, if you have a school district and there's a lot of schools that are running in the fifty percent capacity, you, you are hemorrhaging taxpayer dollars, and what it shows the, the people in the community is you are not a good steward and you don't deserve the responsibility you've been given. and you don't deserve the responsibility you've been given. And unfortunately, in government, it has always been and always will be much easier to spend other people's money than you would have otherwise spent your own. So we see frivolous expenditures and wastes that just go on year after year after year for no reason. And it's something that plagues government at every level. And, you know, we see it even in our county commission. You know, we saw them pass, I think it was a $13 million new garbage can initiative. So we all got new garbage cans. I don't know why I got a new garbage can. My garbage can worked fine. It held garbage and had wheels. And now I have a brown one, and I don't have a use for it because I live on 10 acres. So if you had any sense, you probably would have done that voluntarily. If you want a brown can, you can buy the can, one-time fee, you got your brown can now. I bet very, very few people would have bought that. But unfortunately, five people in a room felt like that was a good use of $13 million. It's insanity. And that's actually the entire amount of money that the sheriff wanted for their budget. And so we got new garbage cans instead of new police officers. And it just makes no sense. So I'm very happy that you are finally going forward with the plan to improve efficiency in this county. And my hope is that the other counties in the state of Florida are going to follow suit. I'm sure there are many counties that are in far, far worse shape from an efficiency standpoint than we are. Over the last five years, you've done a lot, as you've said, to improve our efficiency. But the other counties that are running 50, 40% capacity schools and you're just hemorrhaging millions of dollars and you don't care, you deserve the Hope Florida legislation. You deserve it. You're why it's there. We wouldn't have had it if you knew how to manage a school district. So I recommend properly managing your money and being good stewards of it, or eventually someone comes along and they have to try to force you to do it. And that never really works well because they don't know exactly what you're doing. And now they're trying to legislate a solution for the problem. If you could have just done it right to begin with, we wouldn't be here. So I'm very thankful that you're doing this. And I know it is going to be a big task and it's complicated and it's going to take a lot of time and energy. But I also know that you know it needs to be done and you're capable of doing it. So good luck and we will be here to support you.
Thank you, Dr. Poska. Mr. Dyer?
You know, I remember some, a little over five years ago, watching you during the interview for superintendent saying that there's no reason this shouldn't be an A district. And in all schools, and I remember private conversations, you saying all schools can be A. I did roll my eyes a little bit to thanking that, but you said, no. Every kid can learn. Every school can be an A. And here we are, five years later, 95% of our schools in the district are A schools. We have been through, you said also, we're going to reinvent education. We're going to innovate. We're going to be all about the kids and not about the adults. And from what I've seen in this school district, we have, you have delivered and the team has delivered. And I think that, you know, the old saying is we live in interesting times. Well, we do. And these get more interesting day by day. But the good thing, having watched this district for five years, is that we have a seasoned team that knows how to innovate, that knows how to tackle a problem. And I'm sure with your leadership and their, I guess, vigor and willingness to get the job done and to dig in and to reinvent and to innovate, I have no reason to believe that this won't be successful. I think the efficiencies that I know Dr. Poska has talked about for a while, that I certainly talked about during the election, I think you have gone after them head-on. You're doing things that most people don't dare to do, but you know that continue to be successful. And by the way, through all this, your goal is to be the number one district in Florida. You said that. We noted it.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know.
So not only are you doing all the rest of it, you still have the academic outcome to be the number one school district in Florida. I believe you guys can do it. I believe in this team. I believe in what you've done. I believe the board is going to give you all the support that you need. And I believe we are going to need some support with what's going on at the state level, but we'll get through it and we will overcome and be a great school district. And thank you for the leadership and for what you guys have done to lead us, will do to lead us through this next few years.
Okay, I'll wrap it up. Thank you very much to you and your staff for the forward thinking. I'd like to see us five years from now, and I think we're going to look back and say we did a good job. It's very, very important, as you have been doing, including the unions, talking to faculties, which you'll do soon, and then having those forums for our families because we can all see how this will work, but it will still have some concerns from our parents. And we want to be there for them and make sure that they have complete knowledge of why we are doing this and how we think we will come out. And I think it will be on a very, very good end. You know, being someone who've been in the community for 45 years and in public education for about 50, and 37 in this district, this is tough. You know, when you look back and see where we are and where we want to go. But I think it can work because we involve the people. You know, you've been talking to your teachers. You don't want a reduction in force or your CWA in support. Involve the people, keeping a fun balance that allows us to do that. You know, whether, I think you're right, you may go into these situations and say, this is what I was thinking, but that's a better idea. You know, whether we could pre-K or truly go back to middle school philosophy or look at everything that we want to do. And I'm going to give you a little institutional knowledge. Before Sebastian River High School opened, we had eighth and ninth grade, that's before Sebastian River High School opened. I mean, we had 1,400 at the flick, 1,400. Where do they have now?
Almost six, just about six.
Okay. So it can be done. And then you go to Vero Beach High School, again, before Sebastian River High School opened, we had over 3,000, just on the main campus. Was a little bit crowded, yes, but it was still a great environment for our kids. Indian River Prep used to be at Treasure Coast Technical College. I don't know if you do that right when it first...
I did, and...
I never knew why we moved that because that was a perfect alignment with Carrera Tech. I never knew why we moved that. But anyway, and you look at our magnet schools, they all have waiting lists. You know, and our K-8 schools will be getting waiting lists, obviously. But I think we are in step one of maybe 100 steps. But if we do it right and work with our community and our parents and our students and our faculties, I think we'll be successful. I think it's just something that, you know, this is where we are. We want to be successful for all of our students. And I think the board has made very clear that we're here for you in our community. So anything else, board members? All right, so now we go into Board Member Matters.
Oh, no, we have to vote on the...
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, that action thing. I'm sorry. Action Agenda, why we did this. All right, Action Agenda. Chair will call for a motion for approval to waive, extend the deadline in policy 5121 controlled open enrollments for the Operational Innovation and Efficiency Planning Initiative. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All right, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye, passes 5-0, Dr. Moore. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, we kind of got off. All right, Board Member Matters. Chair Berenberg.
Yeah, let's see. Tomorrow is National First Responders Day. And a special shout-out to our first responders and all that they do. Please recognize them and thank one when you see one. They're everywhere in our community and we can't have a great community without their work. And so we appreciate them. We have several first responders that work with our schools. And so just a little shout-out to them. I attended FSBA Advocacy Committee, I'm the chair of that committee. And the committee is working on some talking points for lots of initiatives as a school board member, what to say in your community, what to say in your dais, what to say when you're up in the legislature. But schools of hope that bill, that statute is definitely foremost on our thoughts. And so that has been in a lot of conversations. The FSBA district chairs that received the letters, I attended that. But also a little note on that, you know, we're all anxiously waiting for November 11th because that's when the date is where others can send us letters. So that'll be interesting to see what happens on that date. FSBA Board of Directors, I was voted onto that board this year as well. I will be forwarding the notes from that meeting to Ms. Morey to send out to all board members so you can see what was done. That was up in Orlando that I attended. And I also attended Steam Quest at Dodger Town. That was for our gifted students. And it was on a Saturday. It was amazing how many parents were there to drop their kids off early on a Saturday morning. And great things, I walked through all the different classrooms, what was going on. And it was impressive. And I know we're doing some things for our gifted program and gifted kids to bring them together across the district. And it was really nice to see kids from different schools working together. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mazzario?
I wanted to recognize the Moonshot Series. I thought that the movie and the collaboration with the district was fantastic. The showing was great. I honestly didn't expect it to be that big of a deal. It felt like a, you know, Hollywood scene. It was just really, really wonderful. When do we get to see the whole thing? That's the big question. We only saw a little snippet. We didn't get to see the whole...
In February, they release each of, they're making one kind of, to put everything together, which would be one series. And then what the coordinate something of, when it's, I think it is available. You can go and see it, each of the different segments. So I think there's nine segments?
Ten.
Ten? Let's go with what Dr. Jacob says.
What is it?
I think it was nine, with eight plus a bonus.
Eight plus the bonus, the bonus one to me is the one that captures Soup to Nuts, which is not, that's the one that's not ready yet.
Okay. Are they still filming or they're done filming?
No, they filmed 20 pounds ago.
Okay. So the, I'm excited to see what happens with Turning Point USA at all of our high schools. I think that that is going to be an incredible opportunity. I know Governor DeSantis and Stacey Anastasius, I always forget. Our commissioner, let's say, our Commissioner of Education at the Department of Education and Governor DeSantis had a press conference, I think today, actually, on Turning Point USA at school, supporting that effort. So I'm excited to see that happen. Had a great time at United Way. I do want to give a huge shout-out to Mr. Green for all of his effort. I mean, he was early, first one at Pelican Island on United, on the Day of Caring. He was, he had coordinated with local, who did you coordinate with? Landscaping companies, multiple, correct? Yeah. And they donated tons of greenery, shrubbery, mulch, plant trees, all kinds of stuff. And so we all got our hands dirty and it was really fantastic. But Mr. Green, I think you went above and beyond. If we had the white cowboy hat, I'd probably tell Dr. Moore to hand that over to you. But I think it went so well. And it was, there were a lot of people who showed up to beautify that school. And not that all the other schools weren't important, but because this was, we recently had the ribbon cutting for the classical magnet. I think it was just fitting for us to be able to help them. And you did super on that day. So thank you for all of your work. And I know you probably don't want the accolades there, but thank you so much. You deserve it. And with that, I'll hand it over.
Thank you, Mr. Dyer.
Yes, I would like to make a correction. There was 10 segments to the Moonshot Series. But I would say that that was on October the 4th, on a Thursday night. We filled Riverside Theater. And it was absolutely spectacular as a preview to those people who were in the film and some community leaders and just the work that's gone on to understand where we were five, six years ago in literacy. Those reading at third grade and at third grade level was what, in the 40s? And actually, in Vero Beach Elementary School was 38%. They were this year at 71%, which was tied for second in the state, our whole district. Just an amazing thing that happens when you have a public-private partnership getting together. And this, as Dr. Moore said, this team has had people from actually all over the country and certainly in the state come down to try to see what's going on here, how we've been able to accomplish this in such a short amount of time. And this documentary, I think, helps describe what any community can do to get behind literacy and to make a difference in kids' education. So I think it's spectacular and there's more to come. I believe in January or February, there's going to be part of our distinguished lecture series. And maybe it'll be a couple of more showings in Riverside Theater, where we'll fill the theater another couple of times just from people in the community, which is, I think, that last big edited version they're working on. Really remarkable, the success that's going on here. I also had the opportunity after our security workshop to tour the dispatch center with the sheriff, at the sheriff's office. And I could say that that was not only impressive, but what a great resource to back up all our school resource officers. And really, it made me feel very good about where our community is in keeping our kids safe and keeping our community safe. So that was a really quite interesting. And again, very exciting times going forward. And can't wait to see where we are again five years from now.
Thank you, Mr. Dyer. Sebastian River High School Homecoming Parade was fun. And Vero's going to do theirs Wednesday. I will join in. Day of Caring, my husband and I went to Indian River Academy. We, with 15 other people, we did a butterfly garden and it was wonderful. I'm on the MCAN Leadership. And our meeting in June is going to be Up Against Poverty to show people in our community what that store does for our community and all the services. The Celebration Grove of our Community Leaders Breakfast. Many of us were there and United Way did a great job. As everyone said, the documentary in October 2nd was really well-attended and it was a lot of fun. And I think people were very, very impressed. I am on the Advocacy Committee under Chair Berenberg. And we have a smaller committee looking at pre-K, hopefully trying to get more funding in pre-K. The Treasure Coast Community Health Ribbon Cutting, October 8th was wonderful. They do a lot of services for our families. I went to the Hispanic Heritage Month Lunch at Felsmer, and that's one of the best times of the year. They have dancing, they have food, and they have celebration. Crown Jewel, I kind of took the trophies when they went to Sebastian River High School. Pushed everybody, no. Vero Beach does not compete. They performed, it was wonderful. And then the Sharks won the overall competition. It was just a fun night. As I said before, I'm on FSBA Federal Committee. And, you know, we're just kind of waiting to see what will happen next, especially with our title schools. I too went to Steam Quest at Dodger Town and that was a lot of fun. Went into all the classrooms to see what they were doing for our gifted program. And the kids and parents were having a good time. And I want to shout-out to Sarah Ainge for the Mental Health Forum with Children's Services last week. She did a great job. And more importantly, it was just great to see the community connections we had with our schools and our communities. As I said earlier, our community forums, when Dr. Moore starts going out there, what's going to be happening, I think, will be a great support. And I'm going to end with the two flyovers at the high school were so flipping cool. And they did it twice at Sebastian River High School. And I love seeing that. Thank you, Dr. Chaffey. And that was, I saw the guys from the airport, Vero Beach Airport. Joel Shear went to school with my brother, I mean, with my son. So a lot of activities going on. And it's going to be November 1st next Saturday, or this Saturday. That's right, okay. Superintendent's closing.
The next two weeks will be extremely busy, as we referenced. Next week, I will have the opportunity to go to AASAs Superintendent Gala, which is kind of the end of my year of reign as state superintendent. And they will acknowledge or identify a new superintendent at FADS in December. And I'll have the opportunity to participate in a number of forums while...
And I'll have the opportunity to participate in a number of forums while I'm there, both Thursday and Friday. So looking forward to the opportunity of representing our collective work. So, there you go.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, for attending. Chair Berenberg, hope you're feeling okay, and we are adjourning the meeting at 8:38. Thank you.